You're on YouTube.
Okay, so get started. One second. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for June 2nd, 2020. We have a fairly full agenda. We're going to get right into it. Try to stay on agenda and focus on decisions that in order if you need decisions from us, please make sure we focus on those decisions so we don't get far right. It's my understanding to our agenda now, the item one, we do not have any public input on non-agenda items, correct, Janice?
That's right.
Yeah, good. The second item is the approval of the board minutes minutes from May 19th, 2020. Is anybody, Taylor?
I move that we approve the board from May 19th, 2020.
I will second.
Okay, motion made in second, any discussion? If not, roll call vote, Allison.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
In Bob's eyes, five zero on to select board reports. Let's start with Taylor. Do you have anything you want to set board report issue?
In the interest of time, I'll save my comments for agenda.
Okay. Ms. Luthner.
I am all set this evening.
Great, Mr. Mark.
I think there's things I want to talk about will come up on the agenda, so I'll wait for those specific items.
Perfect. Ms. Allison.
Uh. I guess I will mostly follow the trend of others. Just small note that I do have today, a couple of people brought over injured animals, and so I have a baby raccoon and a squirrel up here in the meeting area with me, and so I'm trying to do a couple of things and they're supposed to stay warm and they're going to go to rehabilitative, but I may have to step aside for just a moment or two, and I will try to get the baby raccoon on camera at some point.
Please.
It's just the most delightful creature. And I'll weave my select word reports into other agenda items.
Sounds great, Allison. I agree. I'll do the same thing also. And with that, we'll slide into our any comments on the manager's report. I wrote one this past month. Is there any questions or comments on the manager's report? Not because many of them, by the way, Audrey will similar vein will be discussing during the meeting tonight anyway, so. With that.
I don't know if you can see my hand, but.
I'm sorry, I was looking at two places, Allison. Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I thought the manager's report was, was great, but all 11 pages of it or so. And so that was a nice update. I have received a fair number of comments about various things from residents. Of course, one thing that keeps coming up over and over again are the swing set at Lake Beach that isn't there. But I understand that Parks and Rec or Public Works crew is going to get to that when they do some other things. But the main thing that I've heard a lot about or gotten a lot of questions about is the treatment of the trees for brown-tailed moth. And I think that it's going to be important at some point moving forward. I understand that in order to have the opportunity to treat them, we needed to move quickly. And sometimes you just have to act, and I think it was probably the the right choice, at least for most of the trees, but there has, it does kill all, you know, any insect that eats those trees will die. And that is, it's the same chemical that has been recommended for treatment of Emerald Ashbor. And generally, the cost benefit analysis is that the Emerald, the ash trees will definitely die if they are infested with the Emerald Ashbor. So it's a decision about whether the tree lives or dies. For brown-tailed moth, it's not quite so clear. And so I would just think that's something we should monitor and probably after the, you know, pesticide policy says that the town manager can make those decisions with a team, and I know Audrey has wrestled over this. We've all talked about it. If it expands, I think it should probably will just probably need to be a little bit of a wider conversation if we want to treat additional trees. So I've had a little trouble answering some of the questions about that, but maybe a future agenda item.
Sounds good, Allison. Good points. If I don't hear you, how much manager report, we'll move on to item five, which is to consider approval of the use of the village green per application by Vicky Duder for tomorrow evening, Wednesday, June 3rd from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. or discussion, and I know Randy's also signed it for discussion on the current issues and that are going on in the country unrest and racism and these discussions. Is there any discussion with the board or Mark?
I was gonna say I'll make a motion that we okay the use of the village green tomorrow.
I will second that motion.
Perfect. Any discussion? Allison.
Um. I guess I, I'm very much in support of them doing it. I think it's maybe not something that we need to approve. The idea that 50 people can't just spontaneously congregate on the village green. There's no real way to limit it to 50 if it's a planned event. I attended a vigil there that just sort of popped up. I actually don't know who organized it, but it was really done in a quite lovely way. I thought everybody did a great job keeping their distance. I think every single person wore a mask. There was some singing and a little chanting and candles and um, there are definitely, I would say more than 50 people there, but I don't know. I guess when this came to us this afternoon, I was sort of like, okay, why do we? Do we need to approve this? And by making it an official event? I don't know. I just, I, it's kind, and it just came to us today too, so it violates our policy of getting things in by where I think it's Wednesday, the week before. And I, I mean, I would just say that we, we don't stop things like that from happening.
Audrey, any comments?
I would say that, um, you know, the, the group just wanted to make sure that the, um, the town knew about it and that they had permission because, um, you know, they're just being respectful and wanted to, you know, I think get the word out also that they were doing it. So you know, it's really up to you. I think that you can go either way on it, either it's something that you can choose to approve or something that you can just say can happen without formal approval. And there are those sort of ongoing conversations that they want to have coming out of this.
Right.
That might be something where we all just agree that that's not something that needs any formal approval. It's a public open space that they can use it for that.
Taylor, Taylor, your hand up. Taylor? I think we've lost two.
He looks very still.
He looks very still, was right. I think you've got that.
Allison and Audrey are both sort of. Yes, so.
You're breaking up already, yeah.
Yeah, Taylor, Taylor, your internet is
Hello.
bad previously as well.
Say again, Taylor.
Are you with me?
Wow, maybe try turning off your video.
Yeah, are you with me?
Sorry, I don't know. It's hard to say.
The bandwidth. I don't know. Um, I, I don't.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes, there was, we're here.
I was going to say, I think more eloquently than I am now, given that my internet's been breaking up, that Allison and Jenna basically summarized that what I was thinking pretty well. If folks want to exercise their First Amendment rights in the village green, then they should be welcome to do so. You know, I that I agree with Allison that it's a little bit strange to me that sometimes we have to approve who can use and who cannot use the village green. That's a policy, policy discussion that we should probably have for another day. Yeah. You know, so I think I, we, we approve it in one way or another, but in my opinion, it should happen tomorrow.
Okay, then let's just consider some public notice that they're having this, this, this tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 6:00 and and move on with the discussion. I agree and also agree with Allison. This, this has been the week where last minute agenda items have driven me crazy because including one we'll get to in a few minutes, which is the state that that one could be fired to. So thanks for that, Allison. But we don't, yeah, I agree. I was saying reason why 10, 15, 20 people can't go there and have a little talk with each other, or we've had people walk in there and do a, the 25 people and do a, the beginning of a, of a, of a tour of the town with the trees, you know, during Arbor Day. We haven't approved that. So, you know, anyway, let's move on to item now, item six, which would be.
Bob. Bob, you need a vote?
Yeah, there was a motion on.
Was it seconded?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, well, we, we can either table it or we can go through the vote. It's probably easy to go through the vote and just approve it for this time because we've got any agenda. So if there's no discussion, I'll go for a roll call vote from Mark.
I, and I would just like to say a thank you to and to Chief Gaddy for doing this.
Allison.
Do we have an, I, I, I don't believe this is the proper format and that it can, I'm so supportive, but this isn't the right way to do it. We, if, are we going off of the details in the email that we received or is this, what I saw is that no more than 50 people? So if that's not, there were more, well over 50 people at the one I saw and
Well, I think.
I just don't.
I think this is a good, a good opportunity to abstain if you would like to.
Okay, perfect.
That's perfect. Okay, Jenna.
Hi.
Mark, I recall Mark, Taylor. Taylor? I lost Taylor. Bob, I also, so it's, it's four.
Hi.
Okay, got it. So I got one, two, three, yeah, it's a four, one, zero. Thank you. Moving on to item six, which would be the Cemetery Committee Appointments, and these are for appointing two members to our Cemetery Committee and the persons of Randy Sterns and John French.
I would move that we appoint both of those people to the Cemetery Committee.
Second.
And discussion. Not hearing any roll call vote, Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
In Bobby, five zero. Thank you very much. Item seven. The discussion on the, four items on the discussion on the reopening plans for the town of Camden. We obviously have a package, obviously, Laura, I'll let you lead the discussion on those as we go through, let us know what, if it's not obvious, what decisions we, we should and need to make.
Sorry about that. Okay, so at this stage, there, there are four, sorry, five items to discuss. At the beginning of the day, there were four, and that is, and I guess kind of the, the number one item on the top of the list is committees, commissions, boards, and what the select board would like to do about resuming or not resuming those meetings. And then the rest of them are sort of more public facing and have less to do with town business specifically. So that's public restrooms, that's an area where we've gotten a lot of input from businesses as well as residents on opening them or alternatives to opening. We've gotten some feedback from businesses on, you know, ways that we might be able to help kind of improve the public realm so that they can operate and social distancing is possible. And also just generally, how do you, how do we kind of strike that balance of making Camden more vibrant in a time when everybody needs to adhere to rules around physical distancing? Beth is here to give you an update on the summer rec program and what's going to be done with that because that's sort of a unique piece of our business that has some very specific rules around it, and I thought everybody would be interested in hearing what's going to be done with the summer rec program. And then the last thing, this is something that came to us today. The governor came up with a plan for trying to lift the 14-day quarantine by partnering with municipalities to do some extra education and enforcement. And there are some reimbursement opportunity involved in this. So what I wanted to do is bring that plan before the select board and get your feedback because we do have an opportunity to comment and provide feedback to the governor's office. But we have to do that by tomorrow at noon. So that's, that's why we just got it today. We have two days to provide comments and feedback. And it just so happened to coincide with the select board meeting. So I thought I know it's last minute, but it still gives you all the opportunity to, to talk about it and look at it and give me what you think might be for Camden.
Let's start chunk these one at a time, go back to the top of the list and talk about what the first one, which is commissions, committees and boards, your recommendation, and I saw there was multiple everything from leave it as, is let it cook for a while to to allowing committees, commissioners, and boards to meet on a, if they so wanted to, when I, in the conference room separated or as I recall, the select board. If it's something urgent, we want attention to that we could, you know, make those assignments and decide what's urgent to the town. Is that, is that correct, Audrey?
Yes, and I mean, and I, this is by no means exhaustive. It was just kind of to get discussion going. So I'm sure that you know, some of you might have additional ideas other than this. But that's kind of, you know, some of the, the ones that seemed most obvious at this point.
Okay.
I have kind of talked with, you know, some of the staff members who staff committees, commissions, boards. And I think that, you know, the preference would be that we kind of keep it to if there's something, you know, some timely matter that needs committee input on, or if the select board has a specific issue that you would, you would like a committee commissioner board to workshop and provide you with a recommendation. Sort of very task-based, not necessarily resuming normal meetings, you know, as per our usual schedule.
Mark.
I'll speak to it. I, I read your comments, Audra, and, and I like what you were saying, the fact that in order to make it as public as we now require the meetings to be, it would be a hardship on the town staff at this point. Unless they were willing to meet in a conference room at this point. And I think that the recommendation, if there are any specific items we need advice on, we can ask and maybe they can meet on that. But I don't think this is a time when we need to be in a hurry to rush into decisions. Right now, we're right on the cusp of finding out how opening up is going to affect the status of the virus and what's going on with people coming to town. I think we should really key in on that and, you know, maybe readdress it at the next meeting, see where we are in two weeks, see, see what's happened around the world. I mean, this is a incredible trying time for everyone for a multitude of reasons. Now, I don't think we need to rush into opening things because I don't think there's anything pressing. And if there is, we can designate that one, whether it be the planning board or somebody else to, to, to do what they need to do.
Any other comment?
I couldn't agree more with Mark.
Go ahead, finish, Jenna. Go ahead.
I just was gonna, I just couldn't agree more with what Mark had to say. That was exactly my exact thoughts as well.
All right, Allison, your hand up.
I guess I personally really miss the input from the committees. I, and I say that although I'm, I still do feel like I get a fair amount of input from just maybe a slightly less formal way, but I would, I would want to be, I the way that it's framed is important to me because I think that the select board and town staff and all of us always want input from the community. And we would always encourage residents or any other interested party to be organizing themselves however works for them with whatever comfort level they have or format they have and to provide us with feedback. The phone, email, there are any number of ways to provide town staff and the select board with feedback and a lot of people who aren't on official town committees have not been shy about doing that. And so I guess they I, I would like to say that we would encourage the committee chairs to work with their, the rest of their committee members or whoever else might be interested in the community and provide, you know, in that specific topic. And be flexible and do what works for them, but have it be in an informal way. What we can't do is comply with every single rule about transparency and minutes and all of these things so that everybody's included and nobody's excluded and but that they should meet informally. And by not having them be official at this point, they can maybe be a little more flexible with the, with the rules. I know some committees are going back and forth over email and I read that and we should just kind of be careful when it gets to the point where it's substantive that we can cover our bases by including those emails in a select board packet or something. But I don't want to say that the committees can't meet, and I also think there are a few specific areas where we really do need input. I don't know what to do about the bathrooms or to closing the village green or turning that into a food court or a few other things. And I would like to outsource some of that. And so I think to say that we don't have anything urgent is I don't know. It's, it's like we do and we don't because there's a really urgent situation in the community and how can we best get resident?
Please don't mistake me when I say, of course, you know, people are giving us, people are giving us feedback all of the time. You know, this is about our structured committees and the assignments they have. And I think this, we're talking about two different things. Any feedback from the community, and we've been getting lots of letters and lots of comments is important because we need to know what they think. It's, this is just about the structure committees. Anybody can, can reach any of us anytime they want. Our emails are all available.
Yeah.
Get letters all the time.
I would agree, Mark. Taylor, you got anything to say?
Uh, yes, if anyone can hear me, I'd love to talk about it.
So.
Yeah, so I apologize for the interruption. I'm not quite sure what's going on, but I won't, I'll make sure that won't happen again. I'm fine with, with the meetings happening. They need to be held over Zoom. I'm not okay with in-person meetings at this point. And I'll leave it as simple as that.
Okay. All right, I kind of agree with Jenna and Mark. I think I, I think, again, two great points you've all made, but I think I'm getting a lot of feedback from people on a lot of issues and we all are. That's good when I encourage that, but I think the point that Audrey made about rethink is something that the, the official committee, XYZ committee needs to be working on now, is that we can, we should be more specific with, because he really wants the whole committee to be involved. And that's the whole idea of the committee to have a function and a purpose. So I, I would think that until we're ready to, and we can revisit this in two weeks or generally four weeks, but I think we should hold on to trying to formalize committee meetings until unless we have something we want to focus on until we get a little bit more data on what's happening. And, and also we will probably be as we, I'm hoping as we go out, maybe the process, as we're doing it now, will simplify and get better. I'm hoping, maybe I'm wrong. But I would, I would agree with Taylor and with Jenna. So I guess at the moment, I'm hearing the consensus is.
Jeremy has a comment, Bob.
I'm sorry, Jeremy, I didn't issue a little paw there.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that we will, I mean, we have an appeal that's in. So we'll be moving forward with that under through Zoom. And we may have a planning board application coming forward, so we'll continue that through the Zoom process. And we'll make sure that we get all of the information, the application materials, the appeal, and if there's a site plan that comes in, we will make sure that is plastered everywhere. Everyone gets it. It's well out there and we'll seek comment well ahead of time so that.
Actually, Jeremy, didn't you do that with the post office package? Didn't you do a Zoom?
Well, yes, but that, this is planning board and ZBAs are a lot more formal.
Right.
You know, so we have to do that process. So, and it's got to be public and open and all of that. So transparent.
And if there's any committee chairs who are listening or will listen to this, I, I think if they have any items that they think are, from their perspective, urgent, then we want to hear it.
And I, to follow up, I will say you mentioned the post office project. I, I will just say, like Allison said, there are committee, committees that are sharing information, which is a good thing that's still happening. Not formally meeting. But, you know, like the post office project, the his, some of the historic resources committee have looked at that project and have provided comments and it's still happening and that's productive.
Yeah. Well, I guess it was, right at the moment, we all, Allison, I'm sorry.
So are we really going to say that if a committee chair, if we have a committee that is fully capable of meeting on Zoom and they want to, that they're not allowed to do that? Or, I, I mean, I would like to personally offer that anybody that wants to organize on, on Zoom or some other platform, I will find, I will make it possible for that to be live streamed on one of the town platforms and just volunteer my time to do that. It, I certainly, but how can we, look at CEDOC, for example. Don't we need input on community and economic development options? I, I, I do a lot of talking to the business owners, but I don't get everything. And if there is something, like for instance, street closures, how do we collect, do we have town staff that are ready to go out and collect information and feedback from you know, all the downtown business owners and see if there is some kind of collective agreement that yes, it would help, we'd like to try and experiment where we shut down part of Lower Mechanic Street or Bayview Street or you know, if, if CEDOC can come up with some things that they, not just suggestions, but things that they're willing to take the time to, to vet and bring that to us, that, that would be really valuable, I think, and I I don't have all the answers. I don't think any of us have all the answers. So how I don't know. I don't want to require that they meet, but I think it's, would be wonderful if groups do meet.
Well, I don't think. I mean, most committees only meet once a month anyway, so it's not exactly. It's just a question of timing. It's a question of Mark and Jazz's point, I think. Somebody speaking. I'm getting feedback from somebody, but that we should, I, I just don't feel there's a, there's, I don't, I don't see anything burning at the moment, but I'm, I'm open to any other suggestions you all have.
I guess I would, I would move that we allow slash encourage any committee that wants to come up with a plan for meeting that we try to be flexible in, in making that happen, not in, not in person, but.
Oh, Bob, Taylor has a comment.
I know, I see that. I was waiting for Allison to finish. Go ahead, Taylor.
Yeah, you know, I shouldn't be misunderstood. You know, I think that I, Allison and I are agreeing. To me, in-person meetings at this point are not appropriate. However, if, if committees that have relevant things that need to be discussed in a timely manner and do it over Zoom, they should be allowed to do so.
Mark.
I, I, I think the one thing that we decided a while back is I I I think the one thing that we decided a while back is to make sure that all meetings were public. If Allison's willing to volunteer her time, I have no problem with people meeting if if they can be, if the meetings can be public. I think that's a great idea. Um, it just, knowing that, that the hardship and the work that the town staff has to do to put even just our meeting online. Um, and as busy as they are now, I didn't wanna give them an extra um assignment that would be, you know. Really troublesome, but if there are people that are able to put them online, uh then I have no problem with it at all.
Mark, I think, uh, let me jump in again, you know, I think the the key is, you know, there, some sort of sense of urgency, I think, is is reasonable. Um, if if we're just doing housekeeping items um for those meetings, you know, then that could probably wait. However, if there's something urgent or or relatively time sensitive that needs to be discussed for. Whatever reason, then let's make it happen.
As long, I agree with Mark, as long as there are, I assume you're gonna help them get on Zoom and get and get publicly recorded, that should be the caveat. It's a public.
Difficult for me just to log into any to create a a meeting, just like I do for Midco Solid Waste. And I wouldn't even necessarily have to be there for the whole meeting. It could just be. Going. I doubt the demand is gonna be totally overwhelming.
Probably not. Are you talking about YouTube only, Allison?
The Danus has a comment, which I think would be.
I mean, I don't mind doing some of those that either I'm around most nights, but I'm talking just Zoom or are we doing cable too?
No, that's true. That's just.
That's the problem.
Someone might have to be at the town office to do the cable stage.
Yeah, if we just do YouTube, I think it's much easier. I I like that idea, uh because I, I understand it. I'm no expert. I did that. The chat cable channel is the problem child. It's a little more complicated, so if we can do the Zoom meetings, but I agree with also what I'm hearing about. Yeah, it just to sit and talk about, I'm exaggerating to make a point, this doesn't happen, but just a status of things. There needs to be something that the agenda needs to be addressed now to Allison's point about C D A C or whatever. Yeah, those those are the things we wanna continue not to not to lose. Um, but um, yeah, I I would agree with that. I would agree with that. So we should probably know, just notify the chairs. Um, of of the committees that um, you know, then in perhaps the liaisons can make sure, we can make sure that they're focusing on, you know, some of the. Not um exaggerating to make a point, they don't focus on status all the time of issues, but when you have.
Bob, can I make a suggestion? Um, if those chairs just wanna send an agenda that they think is a priority into Audrey and or you. Then that would make it a little bit easier for us to understand what may or may not need to happen immediately.
It's fine. That's fine. I think it's a good idea. I like it, especially YouTube makes it much simpler. Thanks. Good. Well, that's what we'll do.
Oh, Bob, I just wanna also make the point. This, I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be burdensome to staff if it's like a few meetings here or there. It's more of if it's like all twenty-something. I just wanna make that point again.
Yeah, and and there are some committees who who may decide that they don't have anything burning at the moment, so that's cool. Um, and there were, there were some that, and maybe there are some that are just by the email. I would agree that if I was in a committee and I still would talk to my fellow committee people through email, through telephone, I would, I would, I would never stop. Discussing things, if you would hope the things that they're working on, the work plans, and that they're important to the town. I agree with that, so. Let's, let's do that. Let's uh, let's have them uh get an agenda through us of what item or items they think they should be working on now. And uh, that that's great. I love it. Great. Moving on to the next item then on uh public restrooms. Audrey, in your package, you would, and I know you have Beth here and company to discuss it, but um. The, the opening of the, well, whatever restroom and how we do it is, I guess, the question. There's basically two options. We only have, to my knowledge, we only have really one. Public restroom at the landing is next, correct? And um.
Well, we do, I mean, we do have um Late Beach.
Right, right, good point. Thank you. And um, but um, but there was a discussion about the opening that and or porta potties. I think that was the two principal items we had, that I've seen written about. Um, we have had, um. Let's see, I have, we have had uh three uh emails from individuals about, and all of them. Uh, all three, they have Lorna Cummings, Tom and Angela Rothwell and David Dickey, all talking about. Two things really, one related to this, and that's opening of the public, uh some form of restroom because they're getting. Now that we're solely opening retail, obviously people are looking for some place to use as a bathroom. Um, the uh, the the other thing is the picnic tables we'll get to in a minute, but um that's, it's pretty clear. I spent. Um, a fair amount of time talking about dozen businesses over the weekend and it, it was almost virtually unanimous that the public restroom thing being open somehow, some way. Needs to happen. So our decision is, what is that? Um, so there were two options, opening the public restrooms and it's, it's, it's challenges because do we want to change anything or not versus porta potties? Mark.
Um, well, I'm curious to see uh Audrey's um opinions on this. I mean, we have a situation where with a lot of restrooms, restaurants closed. Um, uh, we've lost more than just the the one public restroom we have. We've lost a bunch of others, so. Um, and there are problems with i- in Audrey's uh report, there are problems with. The commercial restroom, our commercial restroom, because it has hand, air hand dryers. Um, toilets can be a bit of a problem because they flush air into the, into the uh atmosphere. So Audrey, do you have a recommendation, what you think would be safer and easier to use at this point?
Uh, I mean, this is so fraught, no matter what you do. I mean, I would say really, you you kind of, if we wanna open. Um, we've kind of got two choices. One is to just provide really clear and good signage. Uh, open the public, the public restrooms and provide really good and clear signage that these are the risks of using. Um, we clean them X amount of times a day at these times. Um, and then everybody kind of knows going into them what the risks are and what's, what's done with them. Um, you know, I I feel like that gives people information and it gives them a choice as to whether or not they're going to use them. Um, or you can, you can do porta potties and, I mean, porta potties in some ways. I guess you could argue they're cleaner and safer. Um, personally, some people have an aversion to them that I understand. So, you know, it's, it's really a personal choice.
It really, it really is. I, I guess today is the correct to state that the porta uh, the porta potty people. I'll get it out. Um, they they've modified the designs quite dramatically to uh, COVID proof them to the extent they can, but. Um, uh, the dispensing of towels is not canned and the hand cleaner and, and there's also the argument about the. The chemicals that are in there, which nobody likes to look at, are are sacred, but in, yeah, you're right, a lot of people just don't like the look and feel. Um, the nice thing about, or a combination, by the way, because the nice thing about porta potties, we can put them wherever we wanna put them. You know, we have the restrooms in the landing and you mentioned Lake Beach, but Lake Beach is kind of out of town a little bit. Um, you know, I don't, if you did the porta potty route, it seemed, it 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 has the distinct ability of flexibility. We could put X there and X there if we wanted to.
And we do have porta potties in other locations all over town.
Right. Allison, do you have a hand up?
Uh, no, but I was about to, um. I I feel pretty strongly that. We have bathrooms and we should open them up at everybody's own risk. Public bathrooms are always dangerous, depending on your perspective. Um, I thought Lorna's comments. Were very reasonable, um, that maybe the, we get rid of the dryers and replace them with just the. Regular, not the automatic paper towel sensors, but the regular ones and. You know, we just post a bunch of reminder signage about the inherent risks and things you can do. There's. It's forcing people to use porta potties down on the public landing next to. I don't care what kind, I mean, how many prevent things can they do in a porta potty to COVID proof a porta potty? How am I gonna go in there with my? I mean, it's, we, I I I could support some additional porta potties around town um. To re, to be helpful if that's, but but not to replace our hardwired infrastructure.
Yeah, Mark, I know you're handing up, I wanna hear from Jenna and Taylor also, Jenna.
Um, my feeling on the public restrooms is similar to Allison's. Um, I do think that they should be open, but I share Mark's concern. About right now, kind of in the next week or two weeks, we're going to see uh the impact of reopening. Hopefully, it won't be a large one, but I think we, there is a use at your own risk component. I think having, I mean. It's gonna be hard to enforce and all of these things that we're talking about do sort of require a little bit more supervision, which is. Uh, asking, you know, of the town staff a little bit, that if we say, you know, one family only, signs that are really specific. And have someone, you know, when they clean, they check in, they kind of check in or mo, I mean, if there's any way to kind of keep eyes on it. And see if it's working, you know, in accordance with the signs, because people, I mean, they need to use, people need to use the bathroom, but people are also concerned about getting COVID. For the most, I mean, most of us have that concern still and hopefully can respect. Um, can respect guidelines. Um, you know, it does concern me. There's no way for it not to, but I I think it's a a fundamental service.
Taylor.
Um, yeah, so this one I thought a little bit about. Um, I think we should open the bathrooms. I think that Mark made a really good. Point last week when he discussed that, um, you know, it said that you need to wash your hands. Possible for thirty seconds and it's pretty difficult to do that when there isn't a bathroom available for a lot of people. You know, everyone on the Zoom right now has been Hannaford and Camden in the last two weeks, I'm sure of it. Uh, I've seen half of you in there. And they've done a pretty good job of retasking their employees to make sure that things are handled in the most appropriate way. To prevent the spread of COVID as much as you can. So my suggestion would be, um. Um, David St. Laurent's probably gonna get a little annoyed with me right now, but I think we should consider retasking some employees. Um, to focus on running that bathroom um for a certain amount of time during the day.
Man it?
Yes, I mean, man it.
That's, that's, um, that is possible. The more that I've been, you know, thinking through while you're all discussing this, um. The harbor, the harbor is like nothing I've ever seen this time of year. It is a ghost town. There's no one there. But two seasonal, three seasonal employees that we usually have down there. That we really don't have any work for them right now and they haven't been called in. So maybe we can sort of adjust and and this would be contingent on them agreeing to do it. But maybe if they don't wanna do it, we'll be able to find someone else who their, their responsibility can be sort of managing the public restrooms down there.
Um, I think, just to be clear, so um, thank you, Audrey, for for offering that solution. And I think to, just to be clear, you know. Or operating in time where, you know, if, if we can figure out some things that can wait, like culverts. That may be able to wait for a couple of weeks or other items that can wait and can take those employees that are most perfectly capable of helping us. Make sure the bathroom is open and available while we're operating in this way. I think that's more important. Um, so we should just consider that possibility. And you know, Randy's gonna get mad now, because I just thought of something else. Um, the, the bathroom at, at Chick Milwaukee. In Rockland is opened and closed by the police department, um, if I remember correctly. So, um, you know, I just, I, I just think it's important that we try to work together to make sure that we are doing everything. Possible to make this all work.
Bob, can I speak up for?
Mark.
Um, a cou- a couple of things to say about this. Number one. Whichever way we go, whether it's porta potties or opening the bathroom, I think we need to leave this meeting with the bathroom open, you know. Yes, I'm worried about COVID nineteen and being very secure, very careful, but restrooms are, you know, are essential, you know, part of human nature. We have to have them and they're not, there's, there's no, there's no question. Uh, I'm in agreement. Um, one thing I wanted to ask Audrey, would it be hard to switch the hand dryers to paper? Would that take any time whatsoever? Um, as you recommend, but that one seems to be the simplest.
It wouldn't be difficult to decommission the hand blowers and put in rolls of paper towels. For, you know, to get this going really quickly and then I can have Beth um look in. Placing the hand blowers with the um automatic.
Then I think, and remember, uh, and Taylor remembered that we had changed the times on these uh on the restrooms to twenty-four hours. So they're no longer closed and shut, and I think that's important. They stay open that time, so.
And also before that, the police were opening and closing them.
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping them open. Uh, just putting rolls of paper in there is a really good solution really quickly. Uh, and I think we should, we should open them right away.
Yeah, I think so too. We need, we need to open like before this weekend, so it sounds like the consensus is to open the bathrooms, uh. Do whatever we have to do temporarily with the paper towels or whatever, and and with appropriate signage. And I think the last item, uh, you know, whatever you need, you know, you've mentioned it, Audrey, and then in parallel with that, I think Audrey. Um, as town manager, you can decide how this thing is stacked, and that's kind of your, your domain.
Yes, but just to make sure that I'm, I'm clear, um, you, you kind of all seem to be um in agreement that it would be beneficial to have. A staff person who's there for a significant portion of the time that can kind of man the restrooms.
Oh, uh.
Allison.
I, I didn't need to give that impression. I, what a miserable. I I do think we need to, to clean them more often, but to suggest that we can have a staff person there. Policing, social distancing, and we cannot guarantee that those bathrooms are gonna be safe, that people are gonna keep their distance.
Yes.
If anything, if you want to take the risk of being out and about and enjoying them, then you, then you do that, but. More, I I totally support additional cleaning, but we can't.
Right.
We're gonna have a town staff person being like, oh, only one family are trying to come up with rules or measuring six feet.
Yeah.
Think we can have the human fair model where somebody's sitting there all the time and.
I agree with, I agree with Allison about that.
So I think we got.
Somebody to be um, to, to, to be in charge of the restrooms. That, you know, is that, that's a difficult job. Even if you're trained for it, um, and if you're not, it's, I don't recommend it.
Right. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think staffing a full-time or 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 person during the day hours, yeah, it's not great duty and I'm not sure it's necessary. The signage has to be appropriate, Audrey, that basically says, you know, we're opening this up, but you know, it's cleaned this many times a day. It's um, blah blah, um, but yeah, I mean, we can't, cannot guarantee that it's gonna be, quote unquote, whatever safe really means here.
Yep, no, that's, that's very doable. Um, our perks department's great with the signage, so.
Okay, okay, good.
They did a awesome job. Those signs are so great. You guys have like the way, the places that you put them, the way they look, it's.
Yeah, yeah, great job. Beth.
Beth has something to say.
Beth. Hi, oh, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I, I got the uh Windows ten update on my laptop today and now it won't work, so I'm on my phone. Um, uh, you know, the only concern that I have, um, well, I have a few concerns, but first concern. Um, is it's really hard to close the restrooms down to get clean. So that's gonna put staff in a close proximity of people walking in on them while they're cleaning it.
Well, you, you should, when you, when you're, when you should clean it and have it locked off so somebody can't come in.
We could do that, but people get mad when we do that.
Uh, you know, you, you should have, could have, would have, but I would suggest you close it off and say, you're gonna have to, I hate to say it, but hold it for ten minutes.
Great, okay.
Well, I'm sure there are other models for what, I mean, what, there are lots of public restaurants all over the place that have. I don't know what best practices are, but I would say we should look. Into that. Are bathrooms always closed for cleaning and?
No, no, it's before this, no.
No, but usually, usually the, what a lot of places will do will close the men's side down and if there's somebody with an emergency. They can allow them to use the ladies' side if it's a male. If you did not close that long.
I think you should put you down there, Bob, and you can just.
I'll, I'll be happy to coordinate with you, Beth, um, because we have, we, we, we just, we just need to get these things open. and do the best we can. But I totally agree if a staffer is not comfortable with, you know, somebody walking in on them, that bitch, that, that portion of the restroom be locked off for X minutes. And that's just what it has to be. Good, that's great. And hopefully we can get that done by this weekend, Audra, because I'm, I think that's the time when people, most people are down there doing their thing. I'm looking at, talking about an update on input from businesses regarding use of public spaces, open space, et cetera. Audra, you want to lead that one or?
Yeah, so Jeremy's really worked hard to try to communicate with a lot of businesses in town to, I mean, and it can't be exhaustive because there are so many and some of them are hard to get a hold of. But he's tried really hard to reach out to as many as possible to get an idea of what, you know, they want, might want, what they might need, any other suggestions. So I'm going to hand it over to Jeremy to kind of talk about some of the things that there seem to be consensus on.
Sure. Thank you, Audra. Just touching back to Allison talked about CDAC earlier, and I just want to stress that I had reached out to CDAC, the entire CDAC group, last week after working with Cabbage and Connectover Coffee folks to, I asked CDAC to use their connections and reach out to downtown businesses and other businesses in town to see what we could do. You know, can we, can we help them in some way? Can we use the public arena? Can we use the public landing in some way? Can we put, you know, can we use parking spaces, all that stuff? And I, so I used CDAC. I reached out to them. And I actually sent a follow-up email today. I have heard back from two members of CDAC on that. I, I got some good comments. Tom Pico gave me some good comments from the. And I got some good comments from another CDAC member. Outside of that, I have heard and seen emails, and I think you all have as well, from like the Camden Deli. The comments that I have heard primarily are, you know, everyone is really, you know, everyone, all the businesses is eager they, as they are to be open. They're very hesitant to be open and they're concerned, and it's been a process for them to open. And so, you know, they've really spent a lot of time trying to understand their requirements and how they open. You know, how they handle their customers, how they deal with social distancing, how they deal with face masks. Those are the primary things on there that I've heard from all these businesses. Those are the things that are on their immediate agenda right now. Outside of that, I have heard from a lot of people, the bathroom issue has been like the number one issue I have heard. So thank you for doing that. I think everyone will be really appreciative of that. The second thing I've heard is that, again, restaurants and again, retail establishments, they're hesitant about opening. They, they're trying to manage it the best way they can for their, their, their employees and their customers, knowing that people are concerned. And so, you know, what I have heard, the restaurant, from the restaurant folks is, is that you start, obviously some are open, but they're really not open for seating. And that's their, their issue. So they don't have seating. They haven't decided whether or not they want to use public space yet, like parking spaces and sidewalks yet. I'm going to touch back based on parking spaces and sidewalks on Main Street. But what I've heard is picnic tables. Can we at least, so that these restaurants can say, okay, here's a takeout, you know, to-go order. There's picnic tables down on the landing. There's picnic tables at the Village Green. There's picnic tables at Harbor Park. That's what I've heard from a lot of folks. And so I think that's one thing we can work on. I have heard about sidewalk closures. You know, can we do things? And I will say, the, everyone knows about Camden is Blooming. That happens on Mother's Day weekend or just before Mother's Day. That's been, obviously that did not happen this year. Cabbage, the Camden Area Business Group is still eager to put on something similar to Camden is Blooming, but they're, they're looking at Father's Day weekend. I think it's June 18th, 19th. And Friday, Saturday, and they're looking to do some things. And that is about using public space for, for an event. Again, you know, everyone understands that the customers aren't there. They're, they're, you know, they're, they're just not there, but they're still trying to feel out what we could do for them. They don't, they just don't know yet. Of, outside of picnic tables on the landing, in the Village Green was suggested and at Harbor Park. And I think, I think it's reasonable. I was down on the landing with Steve Pixley the other day, looking at locations without the town could bring some picnic tables there. I think we could bring a handful over to the Village Green. We have trash receptacles at the Village Green. We have trash receptacles at the public landing. And then I think also we can work with, Audra and I can work with, you know, the library folks about seeing what we can do, committee folks about getting some picnic tables at Harbor Park, because I know they're interested about that issue. I think that would go a long way. Those are the things I've heard most.
Now let's, let's focus on the, on the tables, Jeremy. That's the one that's in front of it.
I think that's good.
Mark, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to start in. I think we absolutely should put tables. We have, you know, a number of great vendors that have been here for years and years that are at risk. And we need to do what we can. We need to change the rules, do some unusual things to help them. The last, you know, last weekend was, we had some incredibly good weather, great time to do picnic benches. You know, where we can place them, obviously the library would need to have, we'd need library permission to put them in Harbor Park. But the, the landing, you know, maybe a couple in Village Green. The one thing I would like to see with the table is a trash, a trash can right with the table. That's the one thing I would like to see so that people don't have to get up and carry it somewhere else or, you know, because I want to give everybody the opportunity to make it as neat and tidy as possible and make the best use.
Right. Jenna?
Um, I don't have a lot to add right now.
Okay.
I, I think a little, you know, the picnic table idea is something that I brought up to Audra just over text. It was something that was brought up to me by a resident quite a while ago, someone who travels quite a bit and has been in some areas where there have been illnesses and outbreaks. And he was very enthusiastic and in fact offered, you know, some volunteer, some volunteer work in a group, a rotary that he's a member of potentially would help. So that's, that's an option and I very much support having picnic tables in public spaces. I just think, again, you know, are we encouraging people to socially distance or are we encouraging people to gather? And that's going to be a fine line that I think is going to have to be a self-defining one.
Correct.
Bob?
Jeremy?
I, I, I would, I, I mean, we, and you know, Steve and I, when we were walking, Steve Pixley and I, when we were walking around the landing, Jenna, you're absolutely right. I mean, I will say like Steve and I, when we were walking, we were talking about where we can place some picnic tables. And they're obviously going to be in, need to be in some parking spaces. And we were talking about, okay, in this area, social distancing, really, we can get one, one picnic table. You know, and I just want you to know, we are thinking about that.
Of course, of course.
We will put signage up as well and we're not going to put picnic tables too close together.
But I think Jenna's point is, there is the, there is the, and I just hear this is a business is the, the wrestling between, we want to get people downtown, but at the same time we want to keep people separated and distance. So I think your point is well taken. But Taylor, do you have any comments?
Yeah, so I, since it's a public meeting, I've been sitting here talking with my sister who works at a different restaurant and asking what she thinks as we've been discussing this. I'm getting the stink eye right now because I put her on the spot. Yeah, there isn't a great answer, guys. There's, it's not a great answer. Personally, I think that the idea of picnic tables in public spaces that are well-regulated is a good idea. The question is, how do we regulate that properly? And the, the conversation that I, that I haven't quite finished here is that, you know, we, we don't know when this is going to end, so we just have to do our best today to try to make things work for everybody. And whatever it looks like tomorrow might be different. So, yeah, I'm open to picnic tables. I think it could, I think it could work.
Okay.
Okay. We would, we would obviously, I mean, Taylor's concerns are absolutely right. If something comes up three days from now or four days from now, those picnic tables would go away. I mean, you know, we're responsible dealing with this.
To that point, Jeremy, something comes up may not be medical. It may be, I'm exaggerating to make a point that nobody's using them. Let's watch and see, you know, but there's no harm in proceeding. But I skipped over Allison. You didn't make a comment yet, Allison.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the Village Green is one of the town's historic properties and we have agreed to seek input from the Historic Resources Committee on any decisions involving historic town-owned property. So I, I hesitate a little bit with the Village Green just because what the, what the deed says is it's about no commercial activity and it's supposed to be a quiet place in the, you know, a, a quiet place of nature in the, in the middle of town. And so I've long advocated for a little bit of relaxing and just having a couple picnic tables at Village Green just for normal reasons. And that is very unpopular with some people. But I don't like the idea of turning it into a coronavirus food court. So I guess it depends on the number of tables and it's hard to understand at least, oh, two. Is that what you said, two?
That's what I was thinking on the Village Green was two tables.
Oh, I kind of like that. We can test, but do you think it's polite?
Well-regulated, well-regulated. Two tables and we have, and we have trash cans right there. That's what I was thinking on the Village Green.
Yeah, well, good, good.
Be closer to the, what are the corner of, what is it? Chestnut and, Chestnut and Elm Street. Sorry, I can hear the dog trying to get up the middle staircase. But we should, we should run this by the.
Sure.
Board Resources Committee and make sure that anything, you know, would be understood to be a temporary.
I can, I will do that tomorrow. And I actually met with Pat Scaling about something else and she's on the Historic Resource Committee the other day. And I actually kind of mentioned something like this to her and it sounded like it was an issue for, for her. But I will certainly reach out to Eileen and the rest of the Historic Resources Committee tomorrow and just say, hey, are you guys okay with this for a temporary period of time? Just as we try to work our way through this COVID thing, I think everyone would be.
That's fine. I, I think.
An email to the board committee with us copied or with Jenna and I copied whoever.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. And I would mimic what Allison said. I, for some reason I have this image of the Village Green that doesn't go with picnic tables, but you know, but I'm not going to suggest not doing it. This all is experiment. And if we want to experiment, we'll, I'm hearing, we are willing to experiment with picnic tables at the landing, at the Village Green and on Harbor Park. Is that correct?
Harbor Park with the library.
Of course, of course. Well, there's a lot of coordination that's going on, but that's what I'm hearing.
What about the Tannery? Can't we just put a bunch, people could go there?
We can, especially for the market.
There is already picnic tables at the Tannery.
I know, so.
Not very many, but that's fine. Yeah, wherever, wherever, those three minimum. I mean, we shouldn't limit this to just one spot. If they, if there's one reason why it should be put someplace else, that's fine. Yeah, experiment. Let's try it. Let's do it.
Okay.
All right.
And I don't think we need a formal approval for something like that. Can I, Bob, go back to Camden is Blooming? Because Cabbage reached out. I had a Zoom conference meeting with them today. Again, they're trying to do a Camden is Blooming thing where they have sidewalk sales and they try to bring people out for Mother's Day. And this is, now they're looking at June, Father's Day weekend, like the 18th, 19th, I think is what it is. Friday from like 10 to 2 on Friday, Saturday. And Randy, I'm glad you're here because what they're hoping to do rather than just sidewalk this year, just for that Friday and Saturday from 10 to 2 is block off the parking spaces on Main Street on both sides of the road so that businesses, retailers and restaurants, et cetera, during that, which is going to be Camden is Blooming, but it's going to be a, a June Father's Day kind of event so that they can appropriately social distance. And what I've heard from some retailers is it's hard to manage the number of people in and out of your space. And if they had a larger space, especially outdoors, and that's what we hear about COVID, being outside is, is good. Social distancing outside is much better than social distancing inside, is that they would like to be able to use sidewalk space as well as parking spaces for that period, for those two days. Business has been pretty slow for all these folks. There's not a lot of people in town. What, and I just want to point out, what I've also heard from businesses in town when I asked seeking, and CDAC is seeking input from them, is that we, this is new for them and obviously it's hard for them, but trying to figure it out, but they don't know what they want or what they could use yet. And that, you know, come July, they want to see, get, get through June and see how June plays out. And if something needs to happen in July or August with the town, like use of public spaces more than it is.
Right.
Then they'll reach out to us. However, Camden Cabbage would like to, and they'll have to come to you formally on June 16th at your next select board meeting, but they wanted to just have me run this by you today, whether or not you're interested in having block off the parking spaces on Main Street during those two days, 10 to 2. So that retailers and restaurants and whatever can use that space part of their event.
Well, I would divert to Rand, that to Randy, but I can tell you, this would have occurred in Utah was the same thing on a Route 1 type road. And you have 18 wheelers wheeling by on 22 feet where people and their kids are mingling around in the parking spaces, killed two children in Utah. So my point is, there's got to be a great safety plan set up for doing this on a Route 1 kind of thing. But Randy, you got any comments on, on this, this kind of?
Police Department would not object to anything that helps our businesses in this time. Although I will echo your sentiments about the safety of vehicular traffic coming down through there. We definitely would want to put some large boards up north and south to alert motorists that pedestrians are in the roadway. Take every opportunity. It would have to be well-signed, well-coned.
Just so you know, Bob, when I spoke with them today, that was my biggest concern as well. That was their biggest concern as well. And I may need to, may need to use some granite or some gabions or something or, or median dividers on the, on the, on each end. And then, you know, cordon off the rest of the area. And they did, I said, what do you need from town staff, you know, to help support this? And they said, well, we just need the town to say okay, but we also need the police department to help make sure it's safe for vehicular traffic and for the people in the spot.
We'll decide, okay, and on the 16th, when we see the plan to keep people safe. And that's fine, but I, I just mimicking, I, I've seen this, this is a Route 1, 18, you know, huge trucks. And I just worry about kids.
I understand.
Jeremy, it can be solved.
Yep.
By the way, also the extent of, one second, Allison, the, the extent of this thing, they need to define very carefully. And when you say in Street is at Elm Street and Main Street, you know, you know, you know the drill, Jeremy.
Yes, I do.
Here's your hand up.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make sure that everybody got a chance to read the blog post that Sarah Miller sent us. I thought it was really thoughtful and kind of went along with some of the overlap between the Energy Committee and the Pathways Committee and maybe this time being an opportunity for us to experiment with things like this. Anyway, it was just really thoughtful comment. It's on the, for anybody that didn't have it sent to them directly. It's on the Penn Bay Pilot. And she has a, a blog. Her name's Sarah Miller and.
Thanks for that, Allison. I'll take a look at it. Mark?
I just want to say, I, I support it, Jeremy. I do. This is a time when we need to be as proactive and supportive as we can to all the people in our town to, you know, just to work together to find a way through all this. So thank you for. So thank you for working so closely with them and.
Um, let's, um, move on to the update on the summer recreation program. And I think, Audrey, are you going to have Beth address that? I'm not sure. It's your call.
Yes, Beth.
Hi again. So, um, summer camps with the Pen Bay, within the partnership with the Pen Bay Wire on as of now. Uh, but they will definitely be different this summer. Um, they, we are going to group children of, uh, in, in groups of ten and they're going to have, um, same grade level, same age level. Um, they're going to have two counselors and that's who they go to camp with for that week. Um, they're going to, each group is going to get their own equipment, um, you know, sporting equipment, um, arts and crafts, hand sanitizer, et cetera. And it's only their groups to touch and play with. Um, sign in and sign out will take place in their parents' cars. And we're going to rope off the, um, parking lot. So different age groups pull in to that area and that's how they get signed in, signed out. Um, there will be no busing, no field trips this year. Um, other than, um, busing the twenty-four, we can only put twenty-four children every other seat on a bus right now. Um, so only twenty-four children from the Snow Bowl to Lincolnville Central School. We may have to make two trips, but that's, that's what it looks like right now. We have about fourteen Camden residents signed up for, uh, random weeks, um, and four for the whole, whole six weeks of camp. So.
Okay.
And usually we have fifty.
At this time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Mark.
I, I, I think, uh, thank you for doing that, Beth. I think more people will sign up as it, it becomes, uh, as they become aware that you're available. We've been waiting to see what's going to happen with camps with our family.
Right.
So, and it's just starting to get out there. Um, Bob, one thing I wanted, I wanted to make sure we didn't skip the, uh, the state, um, evaluation or, um.
We haven't, we haven't got there yet.
Is that, did I get, get out of order here? The proposal that the state is doing about opening up?
Yes, that's item five.
Okay, okay.
On my list it is at least.
Okay, plan, draft plan for tourism that Audrey has to fill out that I wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
Okay, okay. Uh, any questions for Beth on the summer recreation program? Not hearing any. We'll move to a discussion on the, my favorite, on the governor's proposed education and endorsement plan. That may not be what you were talking about, Mark. We'll come back to that.
That is, that is, yeah.
Oh, it is? Okay. Um, which we received, um, ten minutes ago and we want an answer in ten minutes. Uh, would you want to?
All right. I guess, um, so has, ha- have all the members of the select board had a chance to read this?
I did.
No.
Yes, yes, I have.
Yes.
It's in the, it's in the package.
Um, but I'll, I'll kind of paraphrase for the folks at home. So in lieu, uh, as a, as a, um, strategy for, uh, getting rid of the fourteen day quarantine requirement, the governor is looking to try and partner with municipalities on, um, a number of initiatives that might allow, um, you know, visitors to come to the state. Uh, this is kind of in response to, um, you know, the trouble that the tourism sector is facing. Given, um, you know, fourteen day quarantine really primps the ability of visitors from out of state to come to Maine. So there's a number of things the state is proposing. And they've recognized that in order for this to work, they need to partner with municipalities on a lot of these, um, measures. So I, you know, it's, a lot of it is based on the premise that anybody who comes to the state of Maine will have, um, gotten tested to, to see if they are, um, positive or negative for COVID nineteen. And if they're, if they're positive, they have to stay home in quarantine. If they're negative, they can come to the state of Maine. Once they're here, um, a number of, uh, different, different measures will take place on the local level. And these are sort of the four things that they're proposing municipalities partner with them on. So one is public education activities. I think we can make a really strong case that we're already doing a lot of this. So it's printing and posting signage and informational material, any other, um, you know, sort of educational campaign, uh, around, you know, physical distancing and, um, you know, rules around mask wearing and staying safe and all of that. That's kind of the, the thing that they're thinking in terms of pub, public education activities. Um, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of this, but it'd sort of be like a ramped up version of that. Uh, the second is physical distancing work. So this is some of the changes that we're talking about to the public realm that will help facilitate physical distancing when there are people out and about in the town of Camden. So that could be things like, you know, what we were talking about with, um, you know, allowing businesses to, um, operate out in the sidewalks and then closing off parking spaces. So people can, you know, walk along the parking spaces. Um, other, you know, ways that we can sort of cordon off the public realm so that there's less opportunity for people to, you know, less choke points where people are going to be close to one another and, you know, um, like we were talking about with the picnic tables, that would be a good example of, you know, things that we're doing as a town to physically facilitate people distancing in public. Uh, third one, which is the one that I am the most uncomfortable with is the symptom check randomly at key locations. You know, this would be basically having town staff.
Yeah.
Visitor to see if they have COVID nineteen symptoms in public areas. So maybe somebody drives into a parking lot and you have Randy's police officer standing there taking people's temperatures. I'm very uncomfortable with that idea. I think it's pretty ludicrous, but I mean, that's what they put out there and that's what they're looking for feedback on. And then the fourth one is education and compliance checks is needed. So this is more of the, um, enforcement activities that we talked about with the, you know, like the police department. Um, code enforcement officer has some responsibility over this as, as well as local health officers. So this is more of, um, following up on complaints. Uh, it would be a more formal system. Now the state has very much said, um, yeah, call the, um, Department of Community and Economic Development. And oh, by the way, also like tell your local law enforcement officer and this would be much ramped up version of that. There'd be much more local responsibility. But with all of these additional responsibilities to municipalities, they're also proposing reimbursement for our time and expense of working with them on this ramped up education and enforcement. So we'd be reimbursed for, you know, materials like graphic design and printing and taking out advertisements, um, as well as staff time. That's specifically dedicated to these activities. So that's kind of the long and short of this.
Audrey, did I, did I miss the part, uh, the key part that I read, um, on the first item was to avoid the fourteen day quarantine thing. People have to come with a stamp on their forehead and so they have to test someplace.
Yes. Yeah. So, and.
That's the starting point. So.
That's the starting point. But you had, you have to have received some sort of test and they're, they're. And when I read through it again, they're saying not if you're coming from out of, outside the state of Maine, you can have gotten a test in your home state saying that.
Right. So what's the availability of getting tested these days?
Not great. Um, we just had a police officer who, um, they were in a situation where they thought that they were at a risk of being exposed. So they, before they came back on duty, they just wanted to make sure that they were negative. And even a public safety official could not get a test.
Yeah, I, it, it just, it seems to me the foundation of this thing is, is, if, if, it feels to me like what, uh, Dustin's doing is putting the burden on the local, by the way, there is a qualifier and it is, is pretty good. It says, depending on your local, uh, situation in your community, which means we're different than Portland is, you know, right? That's a good thing to think about that. But to get the, to get the fourteen day quarantine thing, somebody has to have something that says, I have to test. Somewhere. Without that, and then you get into the symptoms, random symptom monitoring. So we can get a bunch of, uh, young high school students in uniforms and go around with thermometers around town randomly checking people. I mean, I'm exaggerating to make a point, obviously, but that, that's, that cascade from that very first point, the, the, the ability of people to get tested is almost impossible.
Yeah. And I would, I mean, the, I think the, the part about all this that I'm very pleased about is that before just sort of like shoving this out there and saying, please work with us on this, they actually are asking for our feedback. So we have the opportunity to say, this is doable, this isn't. And I definitely think that, um, one, two, and four are very, very doable on a municipal level. And I think it's great. The state wants to partner with us because I think that with some additional resources, we could certainly do a much better job of education and enforcement. I would say that three, I can't fathom that being something that's practical for any municipality to do. And I also beyond just sort of like the public relations message of doing it, don't see the value in it as fifty percent of the people walking around with COVID nineteen are asymptomatic. So.
Right.
I mean, I, that would be kind of the comment that I would provide. Um, but I think that it's, you know, it's great that we're able to talk about this because as a group, we can, we can provide feedback.
Yeah.
Um.
Your numbers.
Bob.
But Audrey, your numbers, I'm sorry, Jenna, but if you throw in a, I, I'm reading item two is random system checks. That was item three.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm at, um, where is it? It's, it's free local prevention and education. And in our packet, it's.
What pages, what page of the, uh, of the packet, uh, uh, um, this, this document for the state, what page are you on?
Six, it's page sixteen in our packet, page five of the.
Okay. Let me get there. Maybe I'm reading a wrong list. I just want to make sure the, uh, recovery measures and page, the recovery measures.
It's under, it's the subsections under local prevention and education. It says, um, to receive municipal plans must include the four, these four components.
Okay. 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 Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, you think you put it pretty well. I think the, uh, yeah, it's disappointing to me that there, this, this testing thing is a, it, it, to, to make this fourteen day, I know they're getting a lot of pressure to fourteen day quarantine for obvious reasons above the businesses being collapsing. Um, but the testing thing is not going to, is, is number one to me. You said that already. Um, uh, as far as, you know, getting this, uh, walking around the fourteen day thing, it's just not going to happen. Anybody else have comments? Mark?
Yeah. First off, I've got my stamp right here. So if you want me to come stamp your forehead, Bob, I can do that right now. Um, actually, I, I have to say I'm impressed. They're trying to find an answer. There, there is no good answer to this, and I think they're trying to do some good things. And I think we should send back things, uh, answer and the things that we, we are able to do and, and see how they can work with it. Um, I'm also curious if anybody else, uh, if, uh, you know, either, uh, you know, our chiefs are, are, have any thoughts about this, uh, and moving forward. I'd like to hear some comments from people other than ourselves.
Like who?
Like our chief of police or our fire chief? Just, just curious.
Randy, you want to say anything?
Trying to gather my thoughts here. I'm a little hoarse from taking asthma medicine. Uh, I sent my reply to Audrey today, you know, the police department has been doing, uh, education enforcement, uh, bringing these matters to people's attention. We'll continue to do that. I think the floodgates are going to open once, uh, once we, uh, say, okay, if you've got a test, you can come in. Who do they have to check, check in with to show that test that they, uh, they're able to do that? I'm not sure, but I thought I read somewhere in order to get lodging, they may have to show, uh, the person with a lodging establishment. I, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's going to present its own set of problems, but you know, we've, we've been learning how to work through this from day one. So I think it's, uh, something we can probably do. I get up every day and take one day at a time because orders change and we adapt to the things as they go. But, you know, we've got to look at solutions so we don't lose all of our businesses in the state.
You know, to me, the first thing I think about is, uh, a lot of people get this, uh, medical healthcare or, um, uh, privacy policy. Um, if I get a test someplace, it's nobody's business but mine. And to insist that I, 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 I had a test and to insist that I show it, it's going to get, it's, it's, I think that's one of the biggest nuts. We need to feed back to the state to say that's, that's a tough nut to crack. I don't, I don't think they need to work on that. But I agree, the public relations thing is, you know, that's, we, we can do that with our eyes. We're already doing it. Um, but the, the, the symptom checks and the, and the testing thing is, uh, I, I don't, I'm sorry.
I have to say I disagree about the testing. I think it's the way it's going to go in, in the future. It is tough to get testing now. But I think it's an important part of, of moving forward.
Allison, Allison, Randy, go ahead, finish, Randy.
I was very disappointed at the, uh, lengths we went to, to get our officer tested. And because he'd showed no symptoms at all, uh, they would not give him a test.
Yep.
You know, due diligence.
I mean, I, I guess everybody has been saying that the, their response to this really needs to be based on increasing the testing capacity. And the state has created this partnership which supposedly really increases their ability to test. Um, if they come up with a, a reasonable way to be able to bypass that fourteen day quarantine, then I, you know, I, I like the idea of us trying to be responsive and flexible. I don't really love the idea of, uh, creating two classes of citizens. Um, but I trust that sort of as that evolves, that Audra is sensitive to the same issues that I would be around that. Um, and that I do like that, like Audrey said, that they're asking for our opinion. And we don't want to just complain too much and be like, well, you know, we need a month to be able to provide any feedback. And then they're just going to be like, well, this is why we don't work with municipalities to begin with, because they're just so slow that they can't be helpful. So, um, I, I think that, that Audrey, your feelings about this are pretty.
I think.
In line with mine and that I, I'd like us to communicate a helpful, flexible attitude, but, but being holistic about the random stops and symptom checks and what we can hopefully do.
I would agree. Audrey, take the lead and run with it.
All right, will do.
On, onward, okay. Onward and upward toward the, uh, last of that.
Bob.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, I just want to say this, this is the first that I've heard of, um, one of our police officers having difficulty being tested for COVID. Um, that is very disappointing to me. Um.
I agree.
And, um, it's just not acceptable. It's totally unacceptable. I think if there's anybody that needs to be tested, first and foremost, it's our frontline workers. So, um, I wish I had known about this before, but, um, I intend to follow up on it. I just wanted to make sure that that was made clear.
Wh- where was the breakdown in the testing? Where, where did the officer go to try and get tested? Who shut it down?
We, uh, we contacted two emergency rooms and he checked with his physician. And none would offer the test because he had no symptoms.
I thought they'd gotten past that at this.
No, no, they haven't. That's the.
Surprise, surprise.
This is.
I will say that, uh, I did, did get some information later on and I was able to talk to somebody in respiratory. And the person I talked to said, you know, if we were waiting for the person who was, uh, positive, waiting for the person who had contact with them to get a test result. And in the meantime, they, uh, they got a negative test result. So we were off, uh, we were all set. But during that time, I did talk with somebody at a, uh, at a hospital in the respiratory care unit who thought that, uh, they could pipe that up their chain and probably get a test if we needed. So I think, I think we found the back way to do that if needed in the future. But I don't, you have to be doing it through those chains.
Okay.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
No, I agree. I agree with Taylor too. It's, it's, uh, especially the first responders and you guys.
Not acceptable.
Lines. Uh, I can totally agree. Moving on to, uh, uh, the next item on our agenda, which is the, um, approval or discussion on the, uh, let's see, a sale of Engine Two to the town of Hope. Audrey, do you want to have a personal discussion?
Uh, yes, please. I guess just a little bit of, um, background, even though the select board probably remembers all this because it was very recent. We talked about starting to kind of come up with, um, you know, an inventory of assets to sell off. And I think that everybody's, for a while, that, um, you know, there's, um, apparatus in the fire department that, uh, in the fire department that, uh, given some of the challenges we're having with, um, you know, recruitment in the department, we just, we just can't, um, staff anymore. So, you know, Chris is sort of looking at a long-term strategy of what equipment do we have? What are we able to staff? And, you know, what can we sell off and who does it make sense to sell it off to? So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris to talk in more detail about all of that. And, um, there's a memo in your packet um, that he, you know, he provided as well that gives some background on all of this.
Um, like, very, Chris, you're muted.
I think I just unmuted myself.
Where's the memo? I don't.
It's in the packet, my packet.
Well, why are, uh, you're, why are you saying that? When we talked earlier and it was, are you saying something was added to the packet at the, that I?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just reading now.
It was.
Okay, I really, we need to be given, uh, some kind of a notification when things get added to the packet because I relied on the public packet for most of my preparation and then I couldn't find things and then I keep hearing things have been added when there are differences between the public packet and what is on one drive and all of that. We need to, to know about it.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be. They should be all the same.
I've been reading the public packet. It's in the public packet. I'm looking at it right now.
Well, it was just added then, um, because
At two o'clock this afternoon.
From other people saying that links were broken and, um, because if we've done all our preparation ahead of the meeting and then things are added, we don't, there's no way of us knowing to go back and look again. Unless somebody tells us. So that's, sorry to interrupt you, Chris, I just.
Yeah, good point.
I don't know what anybody's talking about.
Yeah, good point. Chris, at least, just tell us what you would have said if you didn't write the memo.
So, uh, it just says Audrey said, and this is not, uh, something that's come up recently. This has been a, a, a topic of conversation for a number of years. And it, it, we're, we're looking at a big picture view of how we can improve our operations, how we can do things better in the long term. And, uh, with the trend throughout the nation of fewer people, uh, stepping up in their communities and, and serving in the fire departments, um, we just can't staff the number of apparatus. And and so we first started looking locally, is there some, are there folks, uh, locally in Knox County, Waldo County, that, that could benefit from having this apparatus? And the town of Hope has been looking at it for years and it's, has recently come to the conclusion that it's beneficial for them. And, um, so that's kind of where we're at. I, I think that their select board is discussing it tonight about moving forward with the purchase and that's kind of where we're at.
I, I, I do have a question, Chris. I, reading your, your, your letter, um, this is, my understanding, this is the only engine that has its own water tank and provides, uh, water uh, for areas that are not covered by hydrants. Is that correct?
Well, it, it has a larger tank. The other two engines have, have water on them. It's just this, you know, this is kind of a hybrid engine. It was kind of, kind of, uh, my understanding, I wasn't around when it was purchased, was it was initially designed to be a tender for the ladder truck. Um, so it's designed to both be a water source, uh, engine as well as carrying water outside the hydrant district.
Okay, so we do have trucks that can provide water outside of the water district?
Yes.
Okay. Do you thi- do you feel they're sufficient to cover? You know, what happened till other, other cities would arrive? Because I saw the one thing, the nice thing about this going to Hope is this would actually be close to some of the areas that don't have a hydrant service.
That, that's a huge benefit of this truck going to Hope is that it's going to come to every fire that happens in Camden.
Okay. A procedural question, Audrey and, and, and Chris, did I, I heard you say that the the Hope Select Board is meeting on this tonight, so this purchase has not been approved by Hope yet?
No.
They, they have talked about it, right? And I, I don't know, I'm not really sure where they are in the process, but I know they are talking about it again tonight.
Well, do we?
Bob.
Have, Taylor, was that you?
Yes, it is. Um, so I, you know, uh, we all pay closer attentions to certain things in town. Um, obviously the fire department is one that I pay more attention to probably than many others on board. Um, so the, the, this makes a lot of sense to me and, and here's why. The engine two is considered a tanker in many communities. What that means is its primary purpose is to provide a significant amount of water very quickly in an area where fire hydrants are not available. Um, in Camden, there are two reasons why that's a little bit less important to us. The first being most, most of our residential areas within, inside the hydrant district have a significant amount of water available because of the fire hydrant system. If you go into areas of Hope, Lincolnville, and most of outside of Rockport, they don't have fire hydrants and they require water to be provided from a different source, i.e. a tanker on wheels that can carry that water to them. The other reason it's a little bit less important to us in Camden is because we have an automatic mutual aid agreement with the towns of Rockport, Hope, and Lincolnville, which means that when a structure fire is called into nine one one, automatically, all four towns responding to that emergency. So, um, you don't just have the engine that we have in Camden, you have the other three towns in addition to that responding as well. Um, so I think that this is, this is part of the chief's plan to reduce apparatus that we don't necessarily need in town. Um, and it makes sense to me that if, if the town of Hope is considering talking about purchasing from us, um, in a rural area, which they are, um, we should be open to that idea. Um,
Other comments?
Sorry.
Um, Taylor, did you finish?
Yeah, sorry. I was just breaking up, but, um, I think I got my point across.
All right, thank you. Allison.
Oh, let's let, let's let Jenna go first or whoever.
Jenna.
Uh, I just have one concern about this. I think it's a great idea and I think some of you know what my concern is. Um, just based on my experience working in the industry with vehicles, and I know this is a different purpose-built vehicle. I have a very hard time selling something of this value without an appraisal. I just, I personally, I, I think it's a great idea. I just think it's a, an I to dot and a T to cross. And I see the price tag and I see that that may be prohibitive. Um, and you know, that's obviously a different, of much loftier, different kind of appraisal, but I have just concerns about not having an appraisal on our, in our records. That's all.
All right.
Otherwise, I think it's a great idea and I love that it's staying in the county.
All right. Allison.
Can I, can I just?
Yes, yes.
React. Uh, and I, Jenna, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Understand that Chief Keller and I have done the research. It's no different than buying a piece of real estate, right? I'm not gonna buy a house without having it appraised. I've done the research.
Right, and I'm not disputing that. I just see the comps that are here and having done auction research and auction pricing and being married to a professional auto appraiser, it's just something that to me, um, may require a little bit. I mean, I, I, I trust you. I'm gonna have to just kind of get pulled in with this. It's just, it's a personal sticking point. That's all.
Allison.
Um, I'm fully supportive of the concept and, um, am in no position to weigh in on what equipment we do or do not need. Um, I guess for me, I was trying to, just to make sure that the community feels good about it. I wanted to be able to share the packet today like I always do and be able to have somebody look at it and say, this is the price. This is the piece of equipment that we have and this is the price that we're proposing to sell it for. And I wasn't able to do that because that information wasn't there. I, all I saw in the packet was just a bunch of different fire trucks that we don't own. And so, um, and then from previous discussions, it sounded like the price, um, that was proposed had just come from the town of Hope. And that, I mean, I think it's a really great point about how we stand to benefit, um, from Hope having it in a way that we, you know, just makes it totally different than a sale, but also just knowing, um, knowing some of those members on the Hope Select Board, they're, you know, they're no dummies and they're good negotiators and, um, so like they're, you know, it just, I didn't like that the, all the information wasn't available. I'm.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I guess, uh, to that point, um, it, if Hope hasn't approved the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, what are we approving? And what?
Are we approving, offering it to them or?
Well, that's the question. I'm just asking the question. Are we approving an offer to?
Well, we have been, we have been approached by both the fire chief and the town manager about the offer of a hundred and twenty thousand.
But it hasn't been approved by the select board yet.
I don't believe so, but I think that they wanted, they wanted to know if it would be accepted by the Camden Select Board.
If the one twenty is being accepted by the Camden Select Board.
Yes.
Feels like a chicken and egg.
Well, they might.
It feels really backwards.
Just to, just to clarify what they might be doing. So they might have approved the offer, um, of the hundred and twenty, the sale or the purchase of the hundred and twenty thousand. But they might be working on, uh, the funding sources or any financing.
Let's see.
Sorry, I feel like I need to mute.
I see, I see, I see. Mark?
Um, Chris, I have, I have one question. Um, how often do we use this, this truck? Do we ever use it?
I would say infrequently.
Okay. I, I, I have to say, I think it's a great idea for it to go to Hope. I, I would, I would think they have maybe more use for it because they probably don't have the hydrant system that we do. Um, and then it's available to us. I think it's, it's the, the best case scenario like Taylor talked about. Um, I have no problem authorizing the price. I thought the, the work that Chris, uh, did was, was, was great. I looked through all the, it's, I'm not an expert, you know, I don't have the experience that Jenna does, but I thought it was a really good solution. Um, for, you know, for us to, to get rid of some of the equipment, raise some funds and yet have it still available to us. It's a win-win situation.
Right.
Perhaps it's just a.
The one that Hope has right, I thought we were lending it to Hope already.
No, it, that was, wasn't it? It was returned several months ago.
Yes.
Yes, they had it for about six weeks. And I really, well, Mark, what Mark just said, you know, summarizes the situation.
I'm.
And I, can I just add that I just?
Farley had done the, the price setting. That was new information to me. I thought this was just Hope sent us some comps and we were doing it, but it's different to me if Chief Farley was involved and that, that's just new information.
Yeah, I, I would, I would concur to Allison's point. I was upset at myself too because I should have checked the packets and this, this information should have been the packet much sooner, I agree. But having read it, uh, it makes, it seems to make a lot of sense. Mark?
Uh, I think, um, you know, I, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we authorize, uh, the engine two to be sold to Hope for the price designated.
I, I second that motion.
A discussion? Anyone? Roll call, Voit, Voit, roll call, Voit, Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Bob, I, five zero, we'll get it, hopefully get a truck sold for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the town of Hope. Thank you. Um, let me just get back to my.
Did Bob sound like a Price is Right game show host for just like a brief?
He really did.
Thanks, Audrey. I needed the love, Eddie.
Um, just, uh, just so you know, Chief, Chief Keller's waiting for an answer, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him know right now that, um, they haven't, it's on their agenda, but they haven't brought it up yet.
Well, we approved hundred and forty.
Will do.
All right. Um, uh, item number nine, which is the approval of bids for, uh, paving in general, and also secondly for the snowball stream crossing. Um, Audrey, I presume you'll relegate this and I thought it's, uh, Dave on, there he is.
Dave is here to talk about, so we'll, we'll start with paving because, um, that, it's a fairly, it's fairly complicated, um, with the method that the, uh, different companies use to.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely.
So I, I think it's probably best that, um, you know, I, I, okay, I'll cut to the chase. Allstate is what we are recommending to you all. Uh, it's ver- Dave had to kind of sit down and really work through the numbers because there were, um, the different companies kind of submitted their bids in different formats. So if you have any questions on why Allstate is the, um, you know, the low bidder, I'm gonna turn that over to Dave to explain because there's a couple of different components to that.
Okay.
I would move that we accept the, the recommendation of town staff for the season's paving.
I second.
Uh, and, uh, just, that would be Allstate's asphalt, correct? Um, just to be specific, uh, the normalized number of five thirty-one, one twenty-six, correct, Dave?
That's correct, but that's an aggregate number for all of the roads that we put into the bid. Um, we pay, we may not potentially do all of those roads because of funding. We'll only do, but it's, it's the going rate for the roads that we, we're planning on doing. We'll stop when we basically run out of budgeted money for, um, the roads that we, um, presented in the budget. And anything that's left over would carry over into the next budget year and we would complete them then.
Mm-hmm. Um, just the general question in this discussion, why, why was Allstate's total found to be lower uh, when, when they looked at the total asphalt tonnage?
So, we put out an RFP and included about, included ten roads. And our estimates of the tonnage for each one of those roads,
Mm-hmm.
Two companies just gave a number based on that tonnage. Allstates came out and looked at every road. And, and they felt that maybe some of the roads needed more tonnage.
I see.
And that was where the increase came from. So when you normalized it to be equal with the other two, it, it made it the five thirty-one, one twenty-six.
Right, that's what I thought. Cool. So, I want to be clear. Um, any other comments, discussion? If not, we'll go, we'll call, vote, vote. Mark?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob also, hi, it's five zero for Allstate on the paving. Now on to the, uh, stream crossing quotes, of which we have two.
Yeah, so this is, I mean, this is fairly straightforward. We did include the bid spec in the packet, um, just for everybody's reference. Uh, the bids themselves are pretty self-explanatory because they're lump sum bids. Um, so the, the first one we received was from Farley. It's for two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The second one we received was from JBI and that was for a hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred, I believe. Um, so that's kind of the, the, very simple.
Correct. Okay. Um, and, uh, Allison?
Um, I, I would prefer that this be tabled until next time. I, um, spent a good amount of time looking it over. I'm wasn't able to find verification of, um, DEP certification for, um, sedimentation and erosion control. Um, I wasn't, I, I have seen work that Farley has done on string crossing projects like this. Um, it's been very well done. Um, I feel confident that they have the experience to do it. Um, I, that may be the case for JBI. I wasn't able to find, um, anything. I did call, um, uh, John McLean today, uh, at the DEP just to ask for, um, sort of a checklist of anything that they recommend before awarding, um, contracts for work of this kind. And, um, I wasn't able to speak with him in person, but he, he left a, uh, message and did mention the, um, sedimentation and erosion control and asking if they have, you know, experience with similar projects. Um, I, I continue to be really concerned about what happened at the middle. Um, I, I continue to be really concerned about what happened at the middle school and the damage that was done to McGonagall River. I know that they, um, are good people working for the company and that they've learned, uh, hopefully a whole lot from that experience. But that number feels very low to me and, um, I, I would like a little bit more time to do the due diligence. They, the, the work certainly can't be done right away anyway, because it's in a stream and needs to wait until um, the fall or late summer. So I, I would ask that we table it until next time.
I'm gonna second that.
I just have a, a, a couple of questions. Um, and, and, uh, is who is the, is it Beth that's dealing with this? Or, or, or Dave? And my question is, is why, why is there such a huge, uh, difference in the price? It seems extraordinary.
I think that's a Dave question.
I, I was gonna say, these things, I mean, these two contractors are, in my opinion, equally capable of doing the work. Um, and depending on their workload and their work schedule determines a lot of their cost associated with some of these jobs. Um, I think maybe, I mean, I'm guessing, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing Jake has, um, an opening in his work plan. And that was why his number was lower. And I know for a fact that Farley is very well booked up right now. So that changes, you know, the cost or the, or their bid price. When there's work, when there's, when they have openings, their bid price tends to be lower. They are more aggressive with the bid.
Second question, real quickly, if we wait two weeks, uh, will it affect the price, the bids? When is it over?
That's the other thing. So this work has to be done at the driest time of the year. And, um, that would be August. And in order to get that in the work plan, um, you should make a decision sooner rather than later because I'm sure he's bidding on jobs each, each week and he, or each month. And if, if, um, you know, we lose our spot in line, um, we won't put, we won't be doing that job because you lose that window of dry weather and you can't do it anymore.
Right.
Also, I've just got to say Farley is not, that is not a choice. We do not have two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars budgeted for this project. We have a hundred and sixty thousand available.
Great. Thanks, Audrey. Jeremy, you've been waving like crazy.
Oh, I don't know about like crazy, Bob, but, um, I will say, and I appreciate Allison's concerns. Um, I do think, you know, I've spent a lot of time on site at the school project with Jake and his, and his, and his crew. Um, I think they, they, they really understand it. I will say that we do have a third party inspector on board. Um, so we will have Gartley and Dorsky and myself and Dave St. Laurent, um, monitoring this site throughout the project. I mean, we are the general contractor on this and Jake, JBI is working for us. We are not Ledgewood. We, we are, um, you know, we're the town of Camden. We understand that erosion control is a significant issue. We understand that water quality is a significant issue at Hosmer Pond. Um, that's huge for us. I mean, you know, that was one of the things when I first, I will say, when I first came to Camden and Audra, you know, we talked about the issues at the snowball. Um, I mean, that's huge, um, for me and I, I do take it, uh, you know, a lot of effort to deal with erosion control issues in town. I always have. It's been part of my, my being for the last twenty-some years. Um, it's what I do. So I'm confident with Gartley and Dorsky, Dave St. Laurent and myself, we will make sure that there are no erosion issues. There are no sedimentation issues into that, into the river, into Hosmer or into the stream and in the Hosmer Pond.
And I'd say there's a big risk in not doing this project and that that culvert has pretty much failed. And given that it's pretty much failed, you're going to have way more material going into Hosmer Pond from that brook than if, like, the project is getting to a point where it needs to be done. It is, it's pretty serious.
Dangerous. And God, that's, I mean, worst case scenario, God forbid something happened at the snowball and we needed
Right.
This is a response to.
Bob, I want to call the, call the vote on the, uh, uh, on the motion.
The motion to table.
Did it get tabled?
There was a motion to table and it was seconded, but.
Allison made a motion to table.
Right. That's, and I want to call that, that, I want to call a vote on that motion that she made.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on that motion? And we'll go for a roll call vote. Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
No.
Uh, Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob is now also, so three, two, it, uh, we're gonna table the motion to the sixteenth.
I mean, it's just two weeks. They'll be perfectly fine. We can at least verify that they are, they have gone through that training. And that if they haven't, then they will. Um, to say that we are confident that these two companies are equally capable is shocking to me, given what we saw at the middle school. I very much hope that they have learned, but I've had, I haven't seen so much as an apology. And I also heard, Jeremy, I know you have worked so hard, but that took about, that took a massive amount of town staff time monitoring that, holding hands, going back over and over again. I had many citizens express concerns. Then I would go back out and contact you again. And each time we were told that now they're taking it really seriously. And each time that basically wasn't the case. And I know it was really frustrating for you, Jeremy, and I know that maybe you've heard a lot from them since that gives you confidence, but, um, I think I, I'd be happy to have just two more weeks so that the rest of us could feel and the public could feel a little bit more confident too, because the history of problems at the Snowball is the history of taking the lowest bidder. So let's just make sure that's not what we're doing here and that there's.
Jeremy, your last comment?
Yeah, um, Allison, I'm, I really appreciate every single thing you're saying and I hear it. I mean, I've been doing the, I've been in this field and dealing with site contractors on very large projects for many, many years. And you're right, it does take, and it's unfortunate. It takes a, an inordinate amount of time to work with these contractors. Jake is no different than Farley, is no different than Sargent, is no different than Lane, when they're working on very large projects. Um, and sometimes those projects get out of hand. It happens everywhere. It's not right, but it happens everywhere in the state of Maine. It's not just this, the civil and the, the earthwork side. It's the building contractor side. It's across the board with contracting in Maine. And, um, it takes a long time on very big, complex projects and very big sites to get everyone on board because it's complicated. And unfortunately, Maine um, lags behind on a lot of this water quality stuff for their civil contractors. I will say, I've been working with.
You tabled this discussion to the sixteenth. Let's move on to the next item in place, uh, which would be the approval of the retirement program changes for Empers and ICMA. Audra?
All right, I was muted. All right. So, um, this was tabled from the last meeting and, um, so there, and another part came in, um, because we, uh, were, um, alerted to an opportunity with our other retirement plan. So I guess just to give a little background, the town of Camden offers two retirement programs that, um, when employees are, uh, beginning their employment with the town of Camden, they can choose from. So one is the Maine Public Employee Retirement System. And so what we are asking for is, um, to allow municipal firefighters to participate in what's called a special plan. And that's very similar to what our police department participates in where, uh, the employer contribution is increased slightly from ten point one percent, uh, to ten point eight percent. So, you know, um, the rest of the town of Camden employees who are, uh, participating in Empers get the ten point one percent as part of our group plan. Um, but with special plans for, you know, emergency services, uh, personnel, they can participate in the special plan. So that's what we're, um, proposing. Uh, it would have very little budgetary impact this financial year, um, as well as moving forward. So that's with the, uh, Empers.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any questions on the Empers? Well, we'll take that first.
Oh, Bob, I'll make a motion that we approve the change in contribution from ten point one percent to ten point eight percent.
Second that motion.
Okay. Discussion. Okay. We'll move to roll call vote. Mark?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Five, five zero. Onto ICMA, Audra?
All right. So with the ICMA, this is a little bit different. So with this retirement plan, what we're, um, asking for is a select board's approval to allow, uh, employees who participate in this particular retirement plan um, to be allowed to borrow, um, from their retirement fund. There are very specific rules around how that works. Um, very little risk to the town of Camden because, um, you know, they're borrowing from their own fund at ICMA. It's, it has nothing to do with town of Camden funds. Um, however, ICMA recommends that we get, uh, board approval for this and we all thought that was very prudent. Um, so that's why we're coming to you with this request.
Yeah. And these are, these borrowings from retirement funds are highly regulated, correct?
Yes.
Audrey, if I could just, um, add a few more things to that, this was kind of, um, brought on the, the the vote by the select board to allow these loans to take place out of ICMA was sparked by, um, a coronavirus aid relief economic security act, which is allowing, um, town employees who participate in ICMA to, um, take out a loan and, and they have to qualify. There are three different, um, qualifications having to do with coronavirus. Um, it, number one, either they have to be diagnosed with it, uh, or their spouse is diagnosed, or they're, um, either laid off, their spouse is laid off, furloughed. Um, there's a bunch of factors that would take place. So the, the special cares act loan would, um, it's, it's a suspension for up to one year, uh, to pay back to the town. So, or back to ICMA. So in order for us to offer this cares act, we had to, uh, we have to initiate the, to allow, to take out loans, allow them, so.
Mark? Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the program allowing employees to borrow from retirement funds, uh, for the ICMA funds.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Jenna?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob, I five zero. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item, uh, eleven, which is the approval of the request um, by the chair of the charter commission to extend their deadline to March thirty-fourth, thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, not two thousand twenty, as is on the agenda. Um, Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve the charter commission extension to, uh, three thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
I will second. Yeah.
Okay. Discussion. Allison, you to handle.
Thank you. Yes. Have we made any progress on, uh, coming up with a plan for the select board to be able to meet with the charter commission and, um, brainstorm and just so that I, I'm really concerned that we're going to get to the end of the process and some of us may have significant concerns and that they would have been better discussed earlier on. Um, so I, I love the idea of the extension. Um, but would really like to be able to have substantive conversation with.
Right, right. Um, um, I did speak briefly with the, uh, chair, um, of the, of the commission. And she felt strongly that the, um, that they haven't been together, met together for, um, a couple of months now for obvious reasons. And they needed to get people back on speeders where they actually were. And, and she believes that, uh, and she welcomes that input as soon as possible, but suspect it's probably going to be hmm, like in July, August time period before they can even get together and discuss anything. Um, because she doesn't feel they're all on the same page at this point in time. In the end, they're not finished with review.
Well, that's the thing is we want to wait. I would like to wait and not wait until it's finished. And I keep hearing discussions of a draft that is going to Bill Kelly, that is going back and forth, that is being discussed. And for some reason, nobody's, oh, I, I don't, I haven't heard Deb explain it like this, but it, it feels like nobody's allowed to see it. Um, I don't understand.
I don't see that. Audrey?
Has anybody seen it? I, why? Why is Bill Kelly's reviewing it? Then it feels like.
I don't, I just wanted to ask the question of Audrey. I, I'm not under the understanding that there is a full draft of anything being reviewed by Bill. Is that correct or am I wrong?
I believe that they're sending pieces to him, but I mean, uh, in a lot of this, it's difficult because they, you know, it's not like, it's not like they're sort of a normal committee or commission where you can really direct them the way that you kind of normally would. Um, so I, I, I agree with Allison's concerns because it looks like there are some pieces of this that are being reviewed by Bill that they're not meeting as a group. So there's like three of them that are looking over it and then agreeing on things and sending it to Bill. Um, so it's just, I mean, and I, I know they're doing the best they can, given the weird circumstances around not being able to meet. Um, but I think that given so much has been given to Bill for comment that it's almost like you are getting to a point where I just feel like things will be a little too completed and there's not going to be as much flexibility for feedback if you don't proactively schedule something soon. I think out of all of the groups that we've talked about needing to meet with,
Mm-hmm.
probably one of them where it really is something that, um, every, you know, the opportunity is going to be lost or it's just going to get much more difficult to have a productive conversation and give input if you don't meet sooner rather than later.
Okay. Okay. Well, how do, how do we, how do we stick our oil in the water in that regard then? Do we request uh, copies of what's going to Bill in parallel? I mean, if, if, I know it's pieces of the pie.
Well, I would say like anything that's gone to Bill for review should be game for the select board to look over. And maybe once we've been able to amalgamate all of that, send it to you. You guys have had a chance to read it, digest it, kind of come up with some feedback or comments. Maybe we could set up a first of what will be, um, a few workshops where you provide some input to them.
This sounds like a good idea. I love it. So are we going to request from Bill to get us copies of what he received to date?
Yes. And I, I believe I have most of that material as well because Deb's been pretty good about CCing me.
Yeah, I would agree. I didn't realize the part about the three people on the commission putting stuff together and sending it to Bill. That sounds like it's, uh, it's going around the process.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, I think they're just trying to do the.
Yeah. It, it's given the situation is difficult. I understand that, but, um, by the time we, by the time we start spending money on legal process review, that's kind of the end of the chain, Allison's point. I, I, I was in the impression mistakenly that the, um, uh, the, the material that, uh, uh, was not in its, its final form, uh, just looking for input on the options legally, doesn't sound like that's happening.
And also quite honestly, a lot of the feedback that, you know, Bill kind of comes to me and we talk over some of the things that we cross his desk and where, where they might not legally pose an issue. I think that politically and policy-wise and government-wise, there are some significant things that it would be really important and really beneficial to have the select boards feedback on. We are reaching that point with a number of things. So I think that, you know, just everybody's sort of, um, mindful of the fact that yes, they're not done. They have a few, um, portions of it that are ready enough to go to Bill. And so you'll just do the best you can with what they've been able to draft up and give to Bill and.
Well, do you, do you think, Audra, if we get that information, whatever it is, and you make a decision on the sixteenth for the first work session?
I feel like that should be appropriate. I mean, even if you all haven't had time to read everything and, um, you know, have comments ready, by then you'll certainly be in a position where you could, at the very least, schedule a workshop with them.
Right, right. I mean, I don't know if you're talking about, you know, two pages of the charter or, you know, fifty pages of the charter. I have no idea. So, um, if it's, if it's, if it's anything substantive, sure. We, we, you're right. We shouldn't do it all at one time. It's too late.
Yep.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Um, but to the motion. But to the motion and second to move the finish date to 3/31/21, any more discussion? Roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Ms. Allison?
Aye.
And Bob's eye also five zero. Okay, great. Moving right along here, we have to renew approval, the renewal of the agreement for the, with the Rockport four, our police chief. Who's still online here. I saw the document. Have any comments? My question would, was this the same agreement we had last time, the three-year agreement?
Yes.
So it's a three-year agreement again?
Yeah, and so the way that this is done, it's all contingent on, you know, budgetary approval. So that's kind of how we.
Does Rockport select, would have to vote on this yet?
They do, and Bill Post has said to me that he plans to put it on their agenda, their next meeting agenda, which I believe it might be.
I think it's next week.
Yeah.
Next Monday. Allison?
Whatever happened with, do they pay for part of Randy's car?
That's actually, we, I remember having this discussion. I don't think we ever followed that up. So I can certainly speak to Bill about that and.
It's not in the contract right now.
No, it's not in the agreement.
What was the question? I didn't hear what Allison's question was.
Remember we discussed Rockport paying for a portion of Randy's car, creative vehicle?
Oh, okay.
Audra, I thought I read that it is in there, the Camden Supplies my car.
Let me check. I thought I read something in it too.
I meant, there's nothing in the agreement about trying to share that.
Right. I believe it says that we pay for the car. Camden pays for the car, as it's drafted right now.
Yep.
Is it worth exploring?
Yeah, it does be, can invite a cruiser, similar police vehicle.
Well, I guess again, a chicken and egg question, or can, if we were to table this and ask that question and then to address it next Monday, would they wait for our, or vote first?
Well, what you could do is vote to approve the agreement contingent on
Some share.
Cost of the vehicle. And that just gives, you know, us the ability to move forward with it if they agree to it. If not, we could all come back and negotiate.
But, but just the, the portion of the vehicle, we need to specify that or leave it to your negotiation skills?
Um, I would say if we're going to put it in the agreement, or if we're going to, if you're going to make a motion to amend the agreement to put that in there, it would probably be helpful if you had an idea of what you would ideally like.
Wouldn't logically be the same percentage of the salary they're paying, would be, I think it's 37%. It would be the same percent of the car?
And maybe we could do it over, because we just purchased the car last year.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe the way that we could do it is it's over the three-year, the three-year contract period.
I see.
I think it would be, I prefer rather than, I'm sorry, I just interrupted and Mark actually had his hand up, so.
Okay, go ahead, Allison.
Thank you. Rather than trying to do percentages that, because, you know, we have all these discussions about like which car should Randy get? And maybe since Camden sort of is reserving some discretion in that area, and then there's fuel, I don't know if that factors into all of this, but maybe it would just be more sensible to, to ask for a flat stipend that is on, on the side of, of not trying to nickel and dime them, that just asking for, you know, asking for some help.
Yep.
And I don't know what number there is reasonable.
I'd like that idea. Mark?
I would just like to ask the chief if he has any opinion about this.
Well, as far as the car goes, I think the reason we kept the car is, how do you split that if we were to do away with the agreement? And who was going to ensure it and things like that? I think that's why Camden was the one who supplied my vehicle. Rockport does pay, I believe, half the fuel. They also pay for maintenance to the car as well. So, you know, I'm sure Bill and the board over there would be agreeable. I won't speak for them, but I believe they would be to paying for some portion of that, but that's.
I like the idea of stipends, as Allison mentioned. Go ahead, Jody.
It's just a, it's a minor observation. How do they come up with the 37%? Because the prior contract was 40.71%. Is there, was there a, this is the first time I've seen this contract, so I didn't know how they figured that out.
Well, they split the, the percentages was based on population, I believe, is how that was formulated.
Okay, so it'll, it'll now be 37% that they'll pay.
So Camden's growing, Rockport shrinking?
It's not a valuation thing as well?
Wait, Jody, I'd like to relook at that and make sure that that's based on the most current
Right.
Population data.
You can check that out. We can still, we can still move to correct that and fill the agreement with some stipend for sharing cars as you, as you determine and go forward with it. Mark?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement with the two qualifications that we will ask for a stipend for the automobile of some sort and that Audra, give Audra time to recheck population numbers to make sure it's an accurate number.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
I'd like to say aye, and I'd also like to mention that I'd like to thank Chief for his comment today on the George Floyd murder. I thought it was really well-written and a really important thing to say.
And Bob's eye, five zero approval of, with those two stipulations, Audra. Item 13 is the approval of the contract with McGunticook Water Association for the inland harbor master. Taylor, you want to take the lead on that?
Yeah, sure. So I think we're kind of following up on a conversation we had a couple of weeks ago. After about a year of work from the inland mooring working group, the sort of, basically this is option number one for us, which I think is the least invasive option to try to quell the conflicts that we've been having on McGunticook Lake, particularly in Barrett's Cove. And that would be to give Dale Doherty, who has, who has currently sort of in a technical basis been the inland harbor master through vis a vis the McGunticook Watershed Association, but has not had any direction from the town of Camden and hasn't sort of been in our ranks in a sense. So I think that the recommendation in its simplest form from the committee was to make sure we have somebody out there who is not attempting to be, to be a police officer on the water, but simply trying to enforce navigation and safety, particularly when it comes to moorings, which has been the, the most difficult thing that seems to be what people are complaining about. I'll turn it over to Paul here, but, you know, I think that this is sort of a good step forward to try to let this summer be a learning process for us to figure out how we can make things not quite so complicated for some folks on McGunticook Lake.
Taylor, before we jump, there's just one question on the draft that we're looking at. And that was the item on the duties where it talks about site new moorings. And there's a note that says need direction from the town, RE areas to site new moorings. That sounds like a, an open item.
Well, so it's my personal opinion that, I mean, it's my personal opinion, but it is the law that when somebody is appointed an inland harbor master, they have the weight of the state of Maine behind them in terms of that title, which means that they are the last adjudicator when it comes to safety and navigation on the lake. And I'll leave it at that, going any further. So I think that, you know, when it comes to moorings, they can say if this mooring is too close to the boat launch, it needs to be moved, it needs to be moved here. So I think, you know, just giving them the authority to do that without us having to come up with a bunch of policy discussions amongst ourselves is the best way to move forward.
And I've, I've spoken with Bill Kelly about this, and he's in agreement that that's something that Dale will be able to do. And let's just leave it at that.
Okay, okay. Again, the question was to citing new moorings, not the existing ones about location. It is a parenthetical here that says need direction from the town, and I just didn't know what that direction is. When do we have to have that? And what are we deciding? New mooring fields?
I don't think, well, so I guess the question for Paul is, we really don't need the direction, I think, can be simple as Dale has the authority to enforce the state law.
Got it, okay.
I would say like when, you know, an issue is reported, like there's too many crowding around the Route 52 launch, people can't put in. And Dale has the ability to move things or tell people they can't have something.
If the direction is as simple as that, I'm fine. I just wanted, I didn't understand the parenthetical. Any other comments? Allison?
I, I guess I thought some of this was going to be a little bit more education and enforcement of the non-moring related lake issues. It would be helpful for me to have just a brief overview of what his current responsibilities are and, you know, where his, what he's allowed, what he does do, what he doesn't do. And, you know, I guess I just don't see the difference totally between what's happening now and what will be happening other, aside from the moorings.
Paul?
Yes, Dale, as the association's lake patrol out there, basically works to educate all the users on, one, the laws that are out there for water use, recreation on the water, as well as some of the safety concerns and stuff like that, to the point where in some cases, someone who may be new to the lake can actually, Dale can take him on a ride along and point out where the rocks are, you know, where you're supposed to go, where the, what the channel markers mean, that sort of thing. And on a day-to-day basis, if he sees someone doing something that he considers unsafe, he'll come up alongside him and talk to them. You know, probably one of the most frequent things, and I've mentioned it before, is you see a small child doesn't have his life jacket on. And he'll come alongside, say, you know, state laws, this, you need a life jacket. We actually have spares in the boat, that sort of thing. If, other things. So basically, safety, he's out there charged by us right now to try to maintain a safe environment. He doesn't have police powers now and he, and under this proposal, he wouldn't have, similar to most of the other inland harbor masters and similar to Steve down in the harbor there. And, but if the discussion doesn't stop the behavior and it is something that's against the law, he'll typically either call Camden PD or the Warden Service. You know, this is for unsafe behaviors, that sort of thing.
And does that, that actually does happen from time to time where he has to contact the police department or the Warden Service?
It has happened. It's, it's fairly rare, but it has happened. And not during Dale's watch, but in previous stuff, we've, you know, sort of escorted people to the boat ramp and either Warden Service is coming in or Camden PD. But again, that's fairly rare, Allison.
Okay. I mean, I guess I would just want to make sure that town resources are going forward, making, making the lake safer for everybody and really focusing on those. I see people going too fast, you know, in the water safety zone all the time. Everybody knows what happened to my sister. And so I, I guess I really, I think it's great for him to be working on the mooring stuff, but would want us to just continue to work toward additional opportunities for making the lakes safer, especially for non-motorized people and vessels. And if you can come to us with opportunities to give more funding or more authority or, you know, just be looking for anything that you could bring to us that would give us, you know, that ability.
Yep. And I hear you, and I think that's, that is one of the things I see ramping up in this is stuff like headway speed in, close to shore there.
Safe zones.
Yeah, I think Paul said it well, that particularly in my eyes, this is a first step and there has to be a first.
Right. Just a point. Yeah, just a point of order here. We're talking about approving a contract in the agenda, but there's no contract in the packet. We have a proposal with outlines. Is there intending, are you intending to draft or contract that covers all contractual terms like term of agreement and all that kind of thing? What, what are we being asked to approve tonight?
Audra, you're muted.
I was going to say that, that was my mistake. So tonight, if you're most comfortable just approving the proposal and then we can work up the formal agreement. If you want to give, you know, empower me with the authority to approve the agreement, that's fine. But if you'd like me to also bring it back to you for approval, that's, that's fine as well. It's really the choice of.
It's a good, I don't have any problem personally, we can discuss with the rest of the board. But I, what led me to that was the length of this agreement, you know, is it one year?
I would see this as a one, an agreement.
Right. How does the rest of the board feel about developing this contract? Audra does it or brings it back to us? Anybody?
I feel fine about that.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with letting Audra.
And why don't we, why don't we have a motion then to approve the proposal and give Audra the authority to draft the contract based on this proposal terms?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Jenna. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, five zero. Thank you very much. Perfect. The next item on our agenda would be a discussion on the post office renovation project. We have a package in the, of drawings and information on the post office renovation project in the memo. Jeremy, Audra, do you want to lead on that?
Yeah, I'm going to let Jeremy start you off and lead on it.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. So we talked about it briefly at the last select board meeting. And I included some drawings and some, what the post office is looking to do or what they're going to do. And I did a little memo on it. So the, just so everyone knows, I did share this with the planning board chair and vice chair as well as the historic resources chair and a couple of key people on the historic resources committee because I know they're really concerned about historic properties. And there is a process that normally would ensue for projects on historic properties if they're town-owned. It also says in our ordinance about federally owned. It's an interesting dilemma because the feds can do whatever they want. They don't have to comply with local zoning. They don't have to comply with local ordinances at all. That said, I met with the post office. Um, that said, I met with the post office um, um, a number of months ago now. Um, post office folks from um, not here in Camden, but the, you know, regional post office people as well as our consultants. Um, what they're um, going to be doing is they're going to be um, doing a small building addition on the rear of the building along Chestnut Street in the loading area. Um, it's a, that's a hundred and three square foot addition. Um, that's an elevator addition. Um, in addition, they're doing some stairs and carrier ramp, which is needed for the post office. Um, and then they are doing some interior renovations to comply with life safety code requirements. Um, then part of the life safety code requirements is a new egress um, door. Um, out of one side, uh, it's the second floor of the building um, from chest, on Chestnut Street. Um, the third window to the rear, and again, there's drawings that show this where it's going. And I know that there's been, so when I sat down with the post office and their consultants, again, many months ago, um, and again, this was before COVID, um, we were going through the process and they said, well, you know, there's the supremacy clause, there's all this. And we certainly want to take, get municipal input, but we don't have to um, comply with it. We don't have to um, you know, um, adhere to those requirements. But they are interested in making sure that they're um, getting comments from the community. So one thing I did say to them, I said, well, certainly it's a historic building. It's in the historic district, it's a significant property. Um, I know our historic resources committee will be very interested. Um, and then I said, and you know, there's also been this ongoing discussion about um, getting the stairs back from Chestnut Street down to Bayview. And they said, yeah, yeah, they were aware of a number of years ago that that was in, that there were conversations about that. Um, the post office never really moved forward on that. And this whole project came forward. So as I was talking to them, I said, you know, it'd be really good if you could include a stair set from Chestnut to Bayview. Um, as an alternate in your package, um, you know, to put out there to bidders. Um, and they said, sure, we'll, we'll look at doing that. Um, and then all of a sudden I got the, the, the plans came in and it is no longer an alternate in their, their project. They actually are moving forward with doing a stair set, coming out of that egress window. Um, there's a stair that comes out of that, um, which will be a new door. Um, and then there will be a stair um, going from Chestnut to Bayview on the north side of the building. I know that, that's not where, and I have spoken with um, um, the owner of the Cuzzi's building um, today about that. He, and, and I talked to Tyler Smith about it too, and about what's been going on in the past. Um, about trying to get something on the south side. And they appreciate um, anything. I will say they do appreciate the post office moving forward with including stair set. I know it's not on the side that they desired, um, but for egress purposes, um, this project um, on the interior renovation side, that's the egress that needs to happen. Um, side of the building. So that's their proposal. Um, the ordinances that we have in town, again, the feds don't need to comply with them. Um, but they, again, they wanted to get um, some municipal input and I shared um, that I had input from the planning board chair. And I had input from the historic resources committee. I have shared that with them. Um, I did speak with Pat Scaling the other day um, about a couple of other things and talked to her about this project. And she actually spoke to the state historic preservation office about their review of this project. Um, and um, they, everyone understands that this is how the post office operates and, you know, they're going to be as cognizant to the historic character of the building as possible. Um, but they do um, have the ability to just move forward on their project. Um, planning board review, technically, if you read the ordinance, um, says they need to go to the um, planning board for this project. Again, the feds say, well, we don't need to comply. Um, anyways, any site plan review that the planning board review, would do on this, based on our ordinance, um, is actually advisory only. It's nothing um, that the planning board or the town can make them do anyways, because of the way the zoning ordinance was amended to address all um, exterior renovations and a, a handful of years ago, um, in certain zones. Um, and then there is a provision in the performance standards for historic properties in the zoning ordinance that says, um, if there's a project on, on, if there's a municipal project, a state project or a federal rural project that is in a historic district, um, then the select board would then refer to the historic resources committee for review. Um, and all of this can't really happen and hasn't really happened formally due to COVID. However, the historic resource committee's been made aware of this. They provided some comments. Again, the planning board has provided some comments. And what I'm seeking is that we just um, kind of waive these um, reviews that aren't really required um, under federal law anyway. Um, and they are working with us. Uh, again, we've come, I've shared comments from historic resources and the planning board with the post office. They said they'll incorporate them if they can. Um, and the state historic preservation commission is doing, saying, said the same thing. The state can't force them, even though the state's required to review it because it's a federal project, a federal undertaking. The state can't, historic preservation office can't even force them to do certain things, um, but they're reviewing it um, under their, their guidelines as well. Um, and that's what this is really about. Um, we will get again, a, a long um, desired access from Chestnut um, to Bayview. And again, I've spoken to the neighbors, the owner at Cuzzi's, um, he's ecstatic about it. He would wish it would be on the other side. And he understands that, you know, there's, there's no real ability for the town to force it one way or the other. Um, and it's really.
Well, the uh, yeah, any, any questions from board members on the, on the design? Mark?
I, I'll just say, um, you know, it doesn't really make any, it's what we say. I'm just really appreciative that they're building the stairway. I think it's a wonderful thing. And I thank you, Jeremy, for suggesting it to them. And thank you to them for following through.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that was the one thing I will say. I said, you know, they said, what can we do for the town on this project? And I said, you can give us that stair set back from, from Chestnut to Bayview. But off.
Remember, they're putting a, a, an exit door, uh, window, and they have to have, um, they had to connect with that stairway.
Correct. They did not have to take it all the way to Bayview. They could have just had that stair come out, just go to Chestnut.
Yeah, you, either, you're correct. It has, but it, it can't land on a lawn, so it has to go somewhere.
Correct. It has to go to a sidewalk.
Who's gonna be in charge of keeping the ice off of it?
Shoveling it.
What?
Shoveling it and keeping the ice off of it. Good question.
I think maybe Dave has something to say.
Dave, uh, I mean, we, Jeremy asked me about that part of it. And I was just gonna ask Jeremy if there was gonna be a railing on that, because that is one steep, long staircase.
Dave, there, if you look at the plans, there is a railing on that. There are landings as well, on compliance stair, exteriors there.
I mean, because that's gonna be, I was looking that over and that, I mean, that's, that's a long, steep staircase.
It is, it is.
Do you remember the old one?
I, I don't, but I looked at the place where this one's going and, and it's, it sounds like a great idea, but I'm just thinking of, if I fell down that staircase, it'd be a long way down.
Well, I think.
I've done it before, but it was, I mean, it was awesome to have it, but it was.
I'm sure.
Or no. You would not go all the way down, Dave, because there is a landing, remember?
That was, that was what I was asking.
If you, if you look at the north elevation, Dave, you can see there's a classic, I think it's, looks like a, a, a seven or eight in a landing. Seven or eight landing. And of course, the, yeah, it, the, the, the last chunk you're referring to is uh, twelve. It's pretty, it's pretty long. But any, any, they, they, they don't have much choice in this situation, otherwise they wind up uh, roughing people off on Bayview.
It's a really wonder, interesting thing, because how many times are we told that things aren't possible because it's not up to code, because the slope is blah, 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 and, you know, it just, but things actually are possible when, it, I mean, it, it's just interesting that.
When you have, when you're the federal government, you have, you have a lot of cubic dollars.
I think we should get federal government involved in a few.
Maybe, maybe. Let's be careful. Um, but anybody have any other questions on this design? Anybody wants to ask? Well, uh, it's, it's great set of drawings. It's an interesting project. When do they propose to move forward with this, Jeremy?
Um, this, this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, and they need to have, then this needs to happen. They have some, again, life safety code issues inside the building.
Sure.
That are driving this.
Okay, great. If there are other questions, we want to.
Oh, that's just funny, because it's, the stairs are so like, not up to like, general safety stuff, but.
Well, so here, Allison, there are some requirements. So on historic properties, that, under the building code and under life safety codes, there are some exceptions, especially for um, entrances, like, you know, main entrances, like we have on the, to this building.
Oh, here's, that's a good example of a benefit of having a, it designated.
It's, it's true. Um, that said, it doesn't necessarily apply to the life safety code on the inside of the building for the employees and how the employees have to um, deal with their day-to-day operations.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Thanks very much for all that, that great package. Um, moving on to the last item on the agenda, which is our public hearings on three liquor licenses. Um, as we've done in the past, and we continue to explain that the, we requested public opinion, uh, public input before this meeting. So we could address it, so the select board could use it to help our deliberations on the liquor licenses. I believe we'll take one, each one of these, one at a time. On the first one, which is the application of White's Hospitality Hawthorne Inn for a breakfast liquor license. I don't believe, correctly from wrong, or we received any um, any public comment, uh, input on that one.
Correct.
But, so with that, we'll, we'll just revert to discussion and decision by the select board on that license application.
Um, I, I move that we uh, approve the application of White's Hospitality House Hawthorne Inn at nine High Street for renewal of classified bed and breakfast liquor license.
I'll second.
In discussion. We'll call Mark.
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And Bob I five zero.
Uh, can I just say one thing? Was that a breakfast liquor license that I heard?
It should be bed and breakfast.
Oh, okay. I, I know.
I believe it.
Special kind of liquor license? I didn't know that.
It says Ben breakfast.
It said bed and breakfast, classified Ben breakfast.
Yeah, I thought it said breakfast too, Allison. So I was wondering, are they serving kind of liquor they're serving for breakfast? I need to go there. But anyway. I decided to keep my mouth shut. Thanks for picking up on that. Um, onto the second one, which is the application of a quarter debt, Deck Inc. Doing businesses Cuzzi's at twenty-one Bayview Street for a class eleven liquor license. In this case, we have uh, public uh, comment. We have, um, let's see, I believe we have three in the packet that have been published with the packet from Suzanne Crawford, one from the, the Linquist, and one from Jesti McWilliams. We have two others that were submitted and have not been indicated in the packet. As a minimum, we will read those into the record uh, for deliberation. Um, but first, um, in fact, why don't I do that? That was an objection. I'll do that right now. Um, hold on, just give me one second, please.
Bob, are we just reading the two that were not included?
We can read them all, but I'm just gonna start with the ones that.
To be honest with you, you know, I think that um.
There's no problem. No problem.
If an item is included in the packet for public discussion, it's not required to repeat what's already in the packet. Um, I prefer.
That's judgmental. If we want to read them, we can absolutely read them. It's not a bad idea. But the, the first one that's not in the packet that I have is from um, Chris Cousins, and I will read his email that was written late afternoon. Um, and I quote, uh, hello, and thank you for your time. I'm writing this in response to emails sent to you recently regarding tonight's hearings on my pending license renewals. First, smoking, colon, during this last year, I've taken multiple steps to ensure that main laws regarding smoking around my business are adhered to. I have hired additional staff, posted several signs and had multiple meetings and conversations with both my staff and customers. Instilling in them the importance of obeying this law and all others. It was not easy, especially at first. A bit like trying to herd cats, I suspect, but with continued consistency, monitoring, cooperation, I think you've done an excellent job. The next topic is noise. I'm sure you're familiar with and have read these, but I have attached the ordinances that relate to noise and amusement permits in case you want. And conduct ordinance that talks about prohibited conduct and acts, colon. Quote, section two point three, unreasonably loud sound production, the playing, using or operating any radio, receiving set, musical instrument or other machine or device for the production or reproduction of sound in such manner as to unreasonably annoy or disturb the peace. Quiet comfort or repose of any other person located more than fifty feet from the source of that sound shall be prohibited between the hours of eleven P M and seven A M. The following morning, within the area set forth in section four point zero, parent exhibit A, unquote. Over the last year or two, the police have been called numerous times because the perception from one or two of my neighbors has been that sounds coming from Cuzzi's are too loud. After the expenditure of time and resources by the Camden Police Department to investigate these numerous complaints, it has been determined that the level of sound was almost never in violation of any law or ordinance. My staff and I are not perfect, but we are trying to be good neighbors, operate within the laws and ordinances of our state in town, as well as conveying that sentiment to our patrons. If there has been any kind of backlash or verbal hostility displayed toward our neighbors, you can be assured, it did not originate nor was it facilitated by me or any of my staff. The main objective of this ordinance is easily understood, but it also provides some protection for businesses such as a bar or any other type of business that may be perceived as being too loud from time to time. To clarify, I point out that unreasonably annoyed party must be, quote, located more than fifty feet from the sound, from the source of the sound, unquote. By having this buffer zone in place, it guards against a person moving in, quote, right next door, unquote, say, three to five feet from an existing business. Perhaps ones that have been open and operating in the same location for over eighteen years, is probably operating at the quietest, most reserved level it ever has. And then constantly calling and firing complaints. At the same time, time alleging that laws and statutes have been broken, when in fact, the person doing the complaint is based, basing their complaints on information that is inaccurate, such as legal last call, that the time music is a stop in the closing time, to name a few. Amusement permits, section four standards, quote, hours of operation. The permitted activities under a special amusement permit shall cease no later than eleven P M in a residential zone as defined by the zoning ordinance of the town of Camden, except that permitted activities so cease, cease no later than midnight in a residential zone on New Year's Eve. And no later than twelve thirty A M in a commercial zone as defined by the zoning ordinance of the town of Camden, except that permitted activities shall cease no, cease no later than one thirty P A M in a commercial zone on New Year's Eve, unquote. Legal last call in Maine is one A M, except on New Year's Eve. And all the drinks must be in the patron's hands and away from them by one fifteen A M, parent, except on New Year's Eve. Once the music is off and the drinks are out of the hand, the actual time it takes to get everyone to leave can vary, and there is no exact time limit. I should mention here that my staff are some of the quickest and best at emptying the bar at closing time, as I've ever witnessed. These complaints, however, are frivolous and unsubstantiated and need to stop. I have been operating this business here in the same location for over eighteen years. If you know you are the type of person who easily is bothered by noise, music, et cetera, then perhaps purchasing a house or renting an apartment right next door might not have been the best idea. This is a business zone where businesses are given some leeway to operate. Might also ju, suggest a very tall and solid fence if you want to keep yourself completely separate. The remaining alleged conduct in the letter sent to you by my neighbor is unsubstantiated, fabricated or best grossly over-exaggerated. I wish I had time to address these issues more thoroughly, but I just received notice of my need to respond this afternoon. In closing, I will say that I'm available, as I always have been, to try and find an amicable solution. Chief Gagny, when contacted, has contacted me and we've worked together to try and deal with each issue as it has risen. And I'm sure he will attest to my sincerity in trying to find a solution that works for us all. If I made, if I am made aware of a person misbehaving and am given a more exact time and place of what went on, then I have a much better chance of, quote, reading out the bad apple, unquote, or confronting the issue to affect change. Than I do if someone just hands me a log of written allegations. Again, thank you for your time, respectfully, Christopher. So that was the letter from Christopher. There's just one of a brief one.
I've got that. If you'd like me to read that one, Bob. Yeah, absolutely. Um, so to the select board. Um, so to the select board, I, as the landlord of the Cuzzi's building and also a part owner of the Whitmore Building, wanted to let the select board know my position on the issues involving Cuzzi's. Cuzzi has been in business at this location for over a decade. The people who are complaining have been in residence for a few years and were aware of the business when they chose to live there. First of all, neither I nor Chris Cousins have ever been contacted directly by Sarah Lindquist or Susie Crawford regarding either the noise or other issues at the time of occurrence. Yet there had have been many reports and complaints filed with the police without ever bringing the issues up with either the business owner or with me directly. The property has been monitored by a video camera in the window of the Lindquist property, and anytime someone walks down the walk to the Whitmore Building or crosses the property at night, they are caught caught on camera regardless of what they are doing. In an attempt to deal with the issue, I am in the process of installing a preventative fence which will stop the egress across the Whitmore Property. Chris Cousins has a video surveillance system, and if he is made aware of issues right away, he would be able and is more than willing to deal directly with the offender, even to the point of not allowing them back in his business. We cannot guarantee, but we believe that with the fence, and if the neighbors make Chris aware within a short time of the incident, you will be able to have better control of the problem. It is my aim that all of the complaints be addressed immediately and hopefully in the future be eliminated completely, keeping in mind that this is not solely a residential neighborhood. I appreciate you taking the time to read this letter, sincerely Keith May.
Thank you very much. Um, those are the only two letters that were not in the packet, correct? Uh, Alson.
So was like Jesse's letter that was in the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
And we we can read those, we're this far along, and so maybe, uh, Taylor?
I move that we approve the application of Quarter Deck Incorporated Doing Businesses Cuzzi's at twenty one Bayview Street for class eleven restaurant lounge and liquor license.
Second.
Discussion, um, I I think, Allison.
Yeah, I mean, I've been vocal about this before, but reading um Cuzzi's letter and Keith's letter, it, it made me feel bad all over again, because even it it's clear that even with the select board and town staff having come down very clearly that there are not violations of the noise ordinance that can be um really substantiated. And even with us being really emphatic last year, there is still this feeling of sort of panic from business and building owners that the every time this comes around, or every time the police get called, that they they have to jump and bend over backwards, and I got all kinds of comments today from people who don't normally get involved in select board issues, but just it's, it's really terrible what is happening, it's terrible that Keith has to, you know, feels that he needs to make changes to the property, it's terrible that, clearly, this has been very stressful for Cuzzi, I mean, we should be so grateful that this business has continued, and yet, like he said, they're not perfect, but we have to do something more to keep this from happening so much, and I I, Audra. Uh.
I just wanted, I felt it's really important to kind of clear the record, because.
Yeah, I'll get to that, Audra, I would, what I want, I'll get to Chief in a second. Um, I just wanted to, you know, you know, obviously, Ms. Crawford and the and the Linquist, Peter and and Sarah, put these letters in alleging certain things about ordinance violations and and that we're not enforcing the ordinance by, um, we're not following through, the town has responsibility, and we're not following through. Uh, the person on the front lines is is Chief Gagnon, you you are the one who uh are at the frontline, you are the one we rely on, we have to rely on for our input in terms of, are any of these allegations fa- false? Are they misleading? Are they confused? Um, I would love to have, and I think to what Audra was going, I would love to have Chief, you comment to those those two letters that are, you know, they're 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 quite, they're obviously two individuals that are strained by the situation. Uh, but what's fact and what's fiction?
Well, we have an obligation, of course, to investigate any complaint that's called into us, and we do that. Uh, we've also set up and done random monitorings of that area for decibel readings. And you saw at the letter that Detective Sergeant Andrick uh did for me that there was one time where the decibel reading was over at certain decibel level. Is this an annoyance to the neighbors that live next to them? I'm sure it is. Uh, looking out and seeing somebody publicly urinate off the back of the deck is a problem. Uh, from what footage that we were provided, we weren't able to make an identification uh who this person was. I brought the issues to Cuzzi's attention several times. Uh, we've even gone down and reviewed his video, and I I couldn't tell who it was uh from his video. Uh, you know, we have a similar situation when residential moved in uh next to the C dog, uh what used to be the C dog over at uh the mill. There's two competing uses in that property, and one is gonna spill over to the other, and I'm sure that it keeps the linkless up at night. There is noise that comes off the back of Cuzzi's, but by the time a complaint gets called in and an officer gets over there, uh, most of the time, those people are gone, there's a lot of noise coming and going. Uh, do we hold those responsible for making noise that are off Cuzzi's property, off his deck, standing on the lawn? Is that something that you take into consideration for licensing? That's a, that's a policy decision for for you to make, but those things do happen. Cuzzi has been always good to work with. Uh, I talked with him yesterday, he, like everybody else, is trying to figure out how he's gonna survive, and and I don't think he'll mind me talking about this. Uh, he mentioned putting in a fence to try to stop some of that. But, you know, you have to look at business plans now, how are you going to be able to operate a bar with social distancing? And I know he's taking all of those things into consideration, and I guess I won't go into everything we discussed, but there may be new uses for that deck area at some point here, so. Like I said earlier tonight, I think we have to all do what we can do to keep our businesses vibrant, especially in this COVID nineteen situation we have. His staff calls us when there's a problem, that's what we have asked them to do. You know, I, if I had a solution for this, you know, we thought we'd have the solution when we put a decibel level in, and we're not finding the decibel levels uh over the limit set by the town, which is sixty five decibels. So when they hear that and they call in a complaint, is it a legitimate point? I I think every complaint is legitimate. Is there a pattern where we don't find a violation? Yes, but we do investigate these things. There were several instances that were brought to our attention that we looked at, that we could not substantiate, that the link was thought were uh probably hatched at at Cuzzi's. Well, if patrons uh hatch a plan there, is that Chris's fault? He's not involved with it, as he has told me. Uh, so we didn't count any of those towards uh the investigation we did for his license. You know, there was some vandalism to their tire, alleged vandalism, a couple of their violations, uh harassment type things, people driving by. You know, we, we can't associate that with the establishment, but it was mentioned, so we brought those up in that. And that was all part of the log that uh uh we were provided as well, so.
So.
The board has a uh decision to make, and.
Yep.
I just wanted to very plainly and clearly make the point that the in in the letter from Sarah uh Roofling Quest, it says that town, basically town staff and council said that we, that we are not going to enforce the noise ordinance, that is incorrect. We have just found every time any complaint has been investigated that there was no violation of the ordinance. And I think that that needs to be clearly stated, except for the time that Randy talked about when there was an exceedance, but it was not an exceedance that was in violation of the ordinance.
Okay.
And to be clear, there, there might be violations of an ordinance, I mean, I, there are so many violations of town ordinances. Every day, we can't even keep track of it, I've seen people urinating on the public landing, I mean, there's there's so many things, so none of those, it it would, it would be very atypical for any one violation or two violations or three violations to 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 shut down a business, um, you know, even if there had been five substantiated violations of the Norris ordinance, um, that that doesn't wouldn't require us to not renew a liquor license, right? As long as the business owner were trying.
Well, remember, we're we're recommending to the state to the date issue their liquor license. That's the action here.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean.
Your, your, what you said is correct.
But we, I mean, the the history of this in Camden is so much more extreme than this situation. It's, it's laughable to me, even just what I remember from ten years ago, when I was bartending. This is so incredibly mild um compared to the way that downtown used to be.
I can concur with that.
Yeah, um, I I agree as well with with Allison and Jenna. Um, in fact, to be honest with you, I think that we've wasted a lot of time on this frivolous complaint enough, which is why I moved so quickly to approve um the application of the license, because the point I would like to make is that um I heard the exact same conversation happen last year, and I thought that we made the point then, so perhaps we need to make it stronger by just um letting those folks know that um you've been heard, you've been heard twice, um, to be honest with you. You know, what I think is happening is that someone is complaining because they just simply don't like the answer they had last time. So the answer that I'd like to give is that, you know, I'd like to move forward with this motion to approve the liquor license.
Yeah, I, um, I'd have to agree, this, this, this shit situation is not gonna change, they're gonna keep communicating, I should communicate with the chief and try to, you know, identify any, any issues that may occur, but we have to rely on the chief's input um for our deliberation, and that's uh always a complication when individuals are living close to a business area and residential, it's it's every, every town and city in the country deals with this every year, so that discussion, um, Allison.
Sorry, but at what point is this a a waste of town resources, and how are we gonna deal with it? I would just like to put this on an agenda in some uh form for a future agenda to talk about how we can deal with the larger issue, the issue tonight.
I think honestly, I I think we make the point by moving forward.
It didn't work last time, so I mean, I would just, so as to not belabor it tonight, and I, I do think we just need to have a larger discussion about the negative impact that this is having, these, these types of residential commercial conflicts and how we can, maybe it's, I mean, it's a dirty thing, it's a town planning thing, it's a and I think a lot of people feel frustrated about it because there's a history of it in town, and so when something like this comes up, it's their opportunity to voice the frustrations of the repeated pattern of this kind of thing. And what we need to create a different forum for that, so that we can try to address it at a more structural level.
Yeah, I guess the the point that I was trying to make is that I'm not, yeah, that, you know, I think at some point frivolousness doesn't deserve a forum, which is the only message that I was trying to send across.
We need to remove the noise order, the noise ordinance needs to go away for the, for the downtown business district. We we made a big mistake as a town by not looking at it district by district, and um, even though there aren't violations of it happening right now, that what it has caused is an obsession with trying to document a violation of this ordinance that we have that should never have been applied to our downtown districts, in my opinion.
Well, we have a motion, and a second on the table, we've discussed it, um, are we ready for roll call vote? Mark?
Hi.
Alson?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Bob, I also five zero. Onto the last item on the, on this uh 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 discussion is the license for the amusement, special amusement for the si- for same. I don't believe we have any, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Andre or not, but then there's no public input on this one item, I don't believe.
Correct.
Okay, so um I wrote to the board action on on the license for Cuzzi's for, and please read it uh for their special amusement permit.
And and there are no like special considerations, right? I remember last time there was this um uh understanding that they weren't allowed to, I think drums weren't allowed, and maybe electric guitars or something like that. And I still today got comments from people under the impression that this had been disallowed, can, so can we just be clear that it's a
It's a self description. Self limiting decision.
Yeah, there's nothing in the ordinance that relates to, I think they do some voluntary things that occur with drums and that kind of thing, but
Right.
Noise is noise, noise can be created from whatever it's created from, there's no prohibition on any instrument or type of instrument that's in the town ordinance that I'm aware of.
Correct.
Uh, if I could, uh, I believe that was a stipulation that was put into Cuzzi's license years ago, and that has since been removed from that.
That's where it came from.
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you very much.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes, we are, Jenna, go.
Okay, I motion that we approve the application of the Quarter Deck Incorporated Doing Businesses Cuzzi's at twenty one Bayview Street for a special amusement permit.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Mark, I think she's chasing. Allison chasing an animal, then Bob says I also, and and that's a five zero vote. And with that, I gotta tell this entire group and some of who were already gone, this agenda was pretty meaty tonight, and you did a great job in getting through this all, and uh, what, uh, less than three hours, oh, that's three hours, I'm I'm impressed. That, I mean, that was a lot, this agenda, it really was.
The raccoon.
Yeah, oh, that's so cute.
It's back.
Oh, God, how, is it a baby?
It is a baby, yeah, who's down on How Hill Road, and he's going over to um Horse and Hound Veterinary Clinic in the, in the morning tomorrow, but uh.
Looks pretty healthy to me.
He's, he's doing pretty well, we think.
You never know what you're gonna see in a Camden Select Board meeting. Again, uh, Mark?
Bob, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the select board meeting this evening.
Second.
Yeah. Roll call vote, Mark?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
By the raccoon, and Bob, I, thank you very much, you all did a great job, but thanks for all your.
Thank you, Bob.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Hey.
I like the raccoon.